Please take your seats. I'm advised by the town clerk that we have a quorum. We have a quorum, and I call to order the second session of the fall town meeting. Can we have quiet, please? A few announcements before we start. One has to do with your conduct during town meeting, which is generally pretty good, but some of you think that this is a dining room. It's not a dining room. We have a cafeteria in the basement, and if you want to eat dinner, please go down there and do so. I'm not going to outlaw food in town meeting, but if you bring a whole meal, please eat it downstairs. With respect to cell phones and other such devices, which you've already, I'm sure, silenced, some of you during town meeting use your cell phones to goodness knows what play games or whatever. And, you know, in fact, this is really a form of disrespect to our proceedings, and if you insist upon playing games or checking your emails, I'd ask you, please, to go downstairs and do so, not do that in the auditorium. Next point I want to make is that when I, in order to expedite our proceedings, I try to call the next speaker forward as the previous speaker is coming to the microphone. What I mean by that is come forward and sit in the front row center so you're as available as possible to the speaker's podium. A few remarks about changing your votes. Some of you still can't seem to find the right keys on your keypads, and if your vote has been incorrectly recorded or not recorded, please come up to the IT desk immediately after the vote is announced or as soon as possible and ask that your vote be changed We must be able to announce a correct tally during our proceedings, which means that once we've dissolved, you can't change your vote, but please do this as soon as possible after you notice the discrepancy. And I reserve the right to reject alleged corrections from one side to the other if the result of the vote will be changed. That certainly hasn't arisen yet, but if it ever does, you've been duly warned. The electronic vote tally last night, which was announced as 63 in favor, 141 against, and five abstentions, should be 64 in favor, 142 against, and five abstentions. Now, finally, as you may have noticed, last night, most of the issues were non-controversial. Most of the votes were either unanimous or nearly unanimous. That, for better or for worse, is not going to be the case this evening. The articles with perhaps one or two exceptions of the five articles before you, three or four are contentious and a couple have been highly contentious. And I just want to remind you that in our town meeting, we maintain the highest standards of decorum. This means, at the very least, not engaging in personalities, and if you do so, you can expect to be admonished by the chair or have your remarks the subject of a privileged motion. Fair warning. Our first item of business this evening is Articles 10 and 11. The motion offered under Article 10 is on the lavender supplement, moved by Mr. Nangle, seconded by Ms. Scharf, to amend the noise control bylaw by, among other things, outlawing gas-powered leaf blowers. There is a referral motion to refer the subject matter of Article 10, found on page 10-6. If you'll turn to page 10-6, there is a minor change to that referral motion in the, it's about a third of the way down on page 10-6. In the last line of the referral motion, the goal that a new warrant article, insert, comma, if indicated, comma, be presented to the fall 2016 town meeting. That's moved by Mr. Schwartz, seconded by Mr. Lynn Jones. The motion under Article 11 is on page 11-5, the lower quadrant, to add to the noise control bylaw a provision to the effect that the Commissioner of Public Works has the authority under certain weather circumstances to waive the restrictions of the leaf blower bylaw, use of leaf blowers. It's moved by Mr. Lynn Jones and seconded by Mr. Franco. We have a great many speakers, and I'll ask you to confine your remarks to what hasn't been already, the points that haven't been already made to the extent that you can reasonably do so. A call on Mr. Nangle. And Ms. Michaels and Mr. Gately, would you come forward and sit in the front row, please, if you're not already there?
My name is Richard Nangle. I'm a town meeting member in Precinct 15 and proud co-petitioner of Article 10. Last night, we passed a series of articles that showed our concern for the effects of burning fossil fuels and our commitment to being a green community. That is what Article 10 is all about. Climate change is death by a thousand cuts. Two weeks ago in Newton at a leaf blower demonstration, I watched four models of gas-powered leaf blowers at work. All four of those models exceeded allowable Brookline decibels according to readings taken by a Newton City official. Some were 10 decibels higher than what is allowed. That means they were twice as loud as what is permissible. That's how the decibel scale works. One leaf blower passed the test. A battery-powered unit used by an organic landscaper who also demonstrated a leaf sweeper which makes no noise at all. He was showing us the way, if only we would take it. Today, I made a call on a leaf blower that read 77 on my iPhone decibel meter. The allowable limit for Brookline is 67. The police arrived, but the violator, seeing that someone was objecting to his usage, had already shut the machine off. The police officer left. The machine went back on, right back up to 77, and that's how it goes. In the past two years, myself and my co-petitioner Irene Scharf have made more than 120 calls to the police on violations. Most of those calls were initiated by our constituents, who knew that we were on to this issue but felt uncomfortable calling police themselves. These neighbors were elderly or moms and dads at home with small children, shift workers just trying to sleep during the day, professionals working from home, a true representation of our town. They were complaining about illegal usage and blowing of debris all over their cars, into parks, onto another person's property, onto the street, onto the sidewalk, and over storm drains. We both made it a point to make eyewitness identification of leaf blower usage before calling police. If we couldn't see it, we didn't call. The result: three citations. Three. This year, we both had the honor of serving on a noise bylaw committee that made a series of proactive recommendations to improve our leaf blower bylaw. We thank Selectman Ben Franco for his outstanding work on that committee, but that committee was limited in its charge by the Board of Selectmen. Irene and I decided to put forth Article 10 as a complement to those recommendations because gas-powered leaf blowers, by their very existence, violate the town's noise bylaw. In addition, Massachusetts has the highest rate of asthma in the country. Less exposure to gas-powered leaf blowers benefits anyone with a respiratory issue. Any scientist, nurse, or doctor will tell you that. Despite pressure from the industry, the American Lung Association still recommends that people avoid using or being near the polluting and inefficient, fuel-burning, gas-powered leaf blowers. Tonight, you will see the other side attempt to frame this debate in terms of safety, cleanliness, and greenness. They seek to create doubt where none exists. That's why a lot of money was spent on this campaign and not by us. The violators want to continue violating our noise bylaw. This morning, I watched the DVD of town meeting from four years ago. There were predictions of loss of business and higher customer cost if the summertime ban went into effect. That can never be backed with evidence. These arguments are used only as a smokescreen and to create doubt. After Selectman and the advisory committee urged no action, Health Director Alan Balsam said leaf blower pollution has an impact on air quality. The show of hands was overwhelmingly in favor. The moderator did not ask for a count. Recently, I came upon a letter written in 2012 by a leaf blower industry lobbyist to a town in another state that had just adopted a full gas-powered leaf blower ban. The letter said the following: "Gas-powered leaf blower technology is improving, and let's give it time to improve some more. Bans cannot be enforced. All scientific studies pointing to the harm that leaf blowers do are outdated, inaccurate, and unfounded. All issues with regard to the misuse of leaf blowers, including the blowing of dust and dirt, can be addressed through education." Now, isn't this all a little familiar? Where have we heard this before? Article 10 extends our four-year-old existing summer and winter ban on gas-powered leaf blowers to year-round. It keeps the current calendar in place for quieter and less invasive technology. It keeps the current exemptions in place for town and large properties. If you look at page 11-1 in your report, you will see that our opponents agree with those exemptions. The language in both articles regarding exemptions is exactly the same.
Now, Mr. Nangle, you said you wanted five minutes, and you've already exceeded that. How much longer will you be speaking?
One paragraph.
Thank you.
Thanks. Article 10 is the only vehicle we have to force violators to adhere to our noise bylaw limit of 67 decibels for leaf blowers. Article 10 is in keeping with our past votes to ban smoking in restaurants, ban Styrofoam cups, and plastic bags. All of these initiatives ran into the same predictable opposition. All of these initiatives are good for the earth and good for our town. We will be supporting referral for Article 10.
Thank you, Ms. Michaels. And Ms. Scharf, would you come forward, please? Go ahead.
I'm a little shorter here, I think. Hi, everyone. My name is Faith Michaels, and I've lived in the town for 30 years, and I own Faithful Flowers. I'm here tonight representing BrooklineLeaves.org, a group of residents and landscape professionals who live and work in Brookline. The group includes insured professional landscapers who live in the town, like me, Pete Gately here, the O'Connell family, Michael Perring, and along with other landscapers who work in Brookline. Our group of 30 landscapers employs nearly 500 people and manages over 3,000 properties. Brookline Leaves also includes many concerned residents who oppose Article 10 because it restricts their ability to maintain their private properties as they think best. Together, we worry about unintended consequences and unfairness of a ban that goes too far and applies only to some in the town. Brookline Leaves was launched in a way to share information. A petition opposing the ban on our site has received over 550 signatures from Brookline residents and landscapers. Their comments express the many reasons why this ban just doesn't make sense. First, is there really a problem? Well, with 300 complaints received by Brookline Police in the past three years, we know that 120 have come from the two petitioners. Other people may find the noise annoying, and I know we can do better, but most understand that we do live in an urban area filled with lots of noises. Let me quickly review the current Brookline bylaws approved. These regulations restrict gas blower usage for two periods, in the spring and the fall. Electric leaf blowers may be used any time of the year. The current regulations also set a noise threshold of 67 decibels or less. The town is exempt from these rules and may use any type of leaf blower at any time. These are already among the strictest regulations on leaf blowers on the books for any local government, but they're not followed bear, everyone, as you know, largely because they haven't been adequately publicized or explained to the residents and landscapers who work here. We think that that's the main takeaway from all the discussion about blowers this fall, and I will get back to that point. Article 10 would ban the use of gas-powered leaf blowers entirely. It would also ban the use of electric-powered leaf blowers all year-round, except for those two periods, in the spring and the fall. Article 10 would exempt the town of Brookline, along with the Country Club, and other non-residential properties over five acres. This represents a double standard that applies the rules differently among the town, the residents, and the businesses. The article originally proposed included the town, so DPW Commissioner Andy Papsturgen was asked to comment on its consequences. He testified that it would take three to five times the number of employees using rakes and brooms to complete what a single employee could do with one leaf blower. He warned of enormous increases in the budget in order to safely maintain Brookline's public ways under the ban. His argument persuaded the petitioners to exempt the town. I recently asked Mr. Papsturgen, even with the exemption, do you think the town would be affected? And he said to me, "You can quote me. The town will be a mess." Okay, so why is this so? Landscapers who work for private residents provide an important public service as well. You've seen it for the past month. We blow all the leaves into the street or sidewalk. We pick them up with trucks to be mulched and recycled. We clean out the storm drains and leave the streets safe and clear of leaves and debris. Without the use of leaf blowers, landscapers would have to drastically increase their time at each property, and we serve a lot of properties. It's hard to find employees for this difficult work, and increasing our workforce enough to serve current customers would be next to impossible. It's safe to say that less attention would be paid to clearing the street in front of homes, and just as costs would increase for the town, the cost for residents would also climb dramatically. The petitioners have raised health concerns, and these have been addressed by Town's Advisory Council on Public Health, which includes three doctors. They reviewed the research and found no compelling evidence that gas-powered leaf blowers are harmful to the health of citizens of Brookline. If the emissions are as harmful as the petitioners say, how could we allow leaf blowers to continue to be used by the DPW around Brookline schools and parks? The logic and rationale for the 100% ban falls apart in the face of sound, scientific data, and the town's own exemptions. The new regulation would allow for the use of electric-powered leaf blowers two times during the year. However, it's important to understand that electric-powered leaf blowers are not adequate replacement for the gas ones. While they've improved in recent years, they're just not suitable for large jobs. Electric cords and batteries that run out quickly are not tools that we, as professionals, can use to move the wet, heavy leaves. I'm sure you've seen a lot of leaves these past weeks. Not only that, but also a point, some of the electric blowers actually make a higher-pitched, more annoying whine than the gas ones. As for noise, we agree, blowers are noisy, but they've gotten much quieter over the past few years. We have invested thousands of dollars in the quieter machines, and the manufacturers are listening to us and improving their products. You may wonder how this ban would affect you and your precinct neighbors. Yes, some people might be able to rake their own leaves, but many people in this town simply can't do this. The thousands of homeowners in Brookline who hire landscape help will bear the increased costs resulting from the ban or forego cleanups entirely. And this is not a question of obsessing over spotless lawns. This is a matter of removing leaves and debris to keep lawns healthy and pathways safe. I want to turn this over to Kate Beejan here. Who knows her way around a garden?
Thank you. I am Kate Beejan, a resident of the condominiums at Lars Anderson, where the average age is 75, many of whom are single women. Raking and sweeping the leaves are not options, just as shoveling snow or mowing the grass would be impossible for us. There are many beautiful and large trees at Lars Anderson overhanging not only the condominiums, but also the road leading through the property. The association employs a three-man maintenance crew. Two powered backpacks and one riding leaf blower are used to clean up the entire property of 22 units, efficiently, within the regulated timeframe, with little noticeable noise, and extremely important to the residents economically.
It's important that Brookline supports sound regulatory measures that balance the interests of all stakeholders. We're lucky to live in a community that prides itself on diversity, full consideration of the issues, and fairness in its standards. So let's look at the issue of fairness. How can we ban something for one group of people and not the other? Under the proposed regulation, the town and the Country Club would be exempt. Residents would not be exempt. Would Park School and Pine Manor be exempt? Yes, they're over five acres, but Brimmer and May, Beaver Country Day, and Mammonades would not. Selectman Daly hit the nail on the head when she said she could not vote for a regulation as drastic as this, which inherently is unfairly applied. As I mentioned earlier, when leaf blower regulations came out four years ago, many people just didn't understand what was required. There was no informational campaign to give these regulations a chance, and we know this is actually something that can be fixed. Rather than outlawing gas-powered blowers and additionally regulating the use of electric blowers, let's work with the town to inform, educate, and train residents and landscapers about the current regulation. As a first step, landscapers should be required to register with the town, just as they do in Cambridge. When they register, they'd receive a pamphlet written in multiple languages explaining the town's regulations and outlining best practices. Brookline Leaves is willing to help run training sessions for professionals and residents alike. Brookline residents need to be a part of the solution, too. Information on blower use and regulation would be easy enough to send out with a tax bill or post on the town's website. The police department has already named a leaf blower liaison, Officer Muse, and we're committed to working with him. In fact, homeowners, landscape companies are already looking to Brookline Leaves for information about regulations and best practices. We've had over 5,000 page views on our website in four short weeks. It's been up, and we're committed to maintaining this information portal beyond tonight's vote. The Article 10 petitioners want your vote to make Brookline more progressive. Okay, but we're already there with actually very progressive regulation. Let's just add the critical missing component: a comprehensive and effective educational program that other towns can use, too. Let's be the leaders for other towns, showing how we can balance the needs of all stakeholders for the best results. That's what Brookline does best. We come together with our neighbors to solve problems. Please vote no action tonight. Give us a chance to put these recommendations into action. Wouldn't it be nice if this were an issue that didn't return to town meeting every fall along with all those leaves? Thank you very much.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Irene Scharf, town meeting member from Precinct 16 and co-petitioner on Warren Article 10. Rich and I ask you to help Brookline join with the 24 other communities around the country, yet be the first in Massachusetts and the East Coast to declare a near-moratorium on gas-powered leaf blowers, these noxious, dangerous machines, and help maintain our peaceful and healthy lives in town. Based on our experience with the current bylaw over the last few years, a 4% citation rate, and our participation on the Board of Selectmen's Noise Bylaw Committee this summer, our deeply held and informed belief is that gas and similarly-powered leaf blowers have no place in most of Brookline. The noise these leaf blowers create is unacceptable. It is rude to scream loudly right next to people's homes for hours on end and in undulating tones at that. We would not accept this from a bunch of college students or from others having loud parties. And while we are generally free to do what we want, this freedom limits what people can do and certainly should limit what machines can do as well. You've undoubtedly received the paid anti-Warren Article 10 propaganda in the past two weeks. Two pieces of mail, both with the same return address outside of Brookline, with strikingly similar content, and both a paid ad sticker in the tab, cost of about $1,500, and last week's full-page ad, cost of nearly $6,000. That's a buy-in that we can count of nearly $10,000. If you're feeling a bit creepy that you may have been targeted by a well-funded campaign backed by multinational corporate interests with a Washington, D.C.-based lobby...
No, Ms. Scharf.
No?
That's highly speculative, and I'll ask you to confine your remarks to the arguments in favor of Article 10, not to the opponents.
These machines release 100% of their tailgate emissions directly into the environment. Also, they burn fuel inefficiently, polluting the air. There is all, well, I guess I can't talk about the fact that there is any of this going on, but I can talk about that there are 24 towns and cities around the country, including Los Angeles, Berkeley, Santa Monica, Palo Alto, and Aspen, with 24/7, 12-month bans, largely against gas-powered leaf blowers. Moreover, we in Brookline have experience with leaf blower regulation, and we know the fear mongering to be untrue. Interestingly, during the 2011 town meeting discussion of our current bylaw, a landscaper developer opposing it threatened that landscapers would leave Brookline if we enacted the bylaw. They didn't. In fact, the online Yellow Pages lists almost 2,400 lawn service companies in Brookline. He said prices would rise. They didn't. And he said the bylaw would shabbify Brookline. It didn't, and nor will Article 10. This article, in spite of a lot of the opposition to it, did receive strong support from PAX, the premier progressive action organization in Brookline. In addition, while it is correct that the Board of Health Advisory Council found not a compelling public interest from the threat posed by leaf blowers to support a ban, although the Lincoln Board of Health did find such in 2013, that leaf blowers represent significant potential health hazards, the Board of Health Advisory Council did vote unanimously that, quote, "Leaf blowers do present an occupational health threat for the workers using them," and urged the town to develop policies and procedures to promote the health and safety of town employees, private landscaper contractor employees, and residents who use leaf blowers. Finally, some ask, what about private property rights, as has been mentioned already? Yes, we do have the right to do what we want on our property, but not if those actions disturb and harm others. We have lots of rights to speak freely, but we can't use them to the detriment of others, such as, as we all know, yelling "fire" in a crowded theater. This is really about reasonable restrictions. All we're asking for is that people not infringe on our rights in the name of theirs. Remember, tobacco product manufacturers, Big Oil, and others have rights, too, but not to misstate the facts in order to sell cigarettes, oil, or gas guzzlers. I would ask that those of you who are considering this would consider a conversation I had with an elderly neighbor this past fall, who told me while standing outside in her nightgown, explaining her frustration with the contractors who violate the leaf blower law with impunity, "They own the town." And I'm asking for us to help take it back. While we would have hoped there to have been elsewhere at this point, though, the consensus of what we've been hearing has convinced us to support referral on Warren Article 10. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Nangle, you might as well sit down, because I'm not going to take any more comments from you. You've had your moment in the sun. Mr. Franco.
Ben Franco for Unanimous Board of Selectmen. As you've heard, Article 10 and 11 seek to make changes to the rules governing the types of leaf blowers that may be used in town and when those leaf blowers are, may be used. Town Meeting has in previous years enacted a partial ban on leaf blower use based on two separate criteria: the amount of noise generated as measured by decibels, and the times of year they may be used. That's year and day, time of day, excuse me. As you know, the Selectmen's Noise Bylaw Committee delivered a final report this summer that contains twelve recommendations that aim to improve the clarity and effectiveness of Brookline's existing leaf blower restrictions, and that report is on page nineteen-two of your combined reports. Turning to Article 10 specifically. Article 10 seeks to make two changes to the bylaws: to change the definition of what a leaf blower is, and to expand the current restrictions on when leaf blowers may be operated. I stand before you to report that the Board of Selectmen unanimously recommends a vote of "no action" on Article 10. Before proceeding, I want to clarify-
Ladies and gentlemen, there's no need to applaud. This is not a circus. Go ahead, Mr. Franco.
Before proceeding, I want to make sure that everybody understands that Article 10 would affect both gasoline and electric leaf blowers. I believe we understand that the gasoline and diesel-powered leaf blowers would be totally banned under the article, but I think there's some confusion about what it would do to electric-powered leaf blowers. Should Article 10 pass, electric leaf blowers would only be allowed to be used between March fifteenth and May fifteenth, and between September fifteenth and December fifteenth, and this would represent a significant change from the status quo, which only restricts leaf blower, electric leaf blower use based on time of day and noise generated. With that clarified, I'll move on. Shockingly, shockingly, noncompliance with current leaf blower restrictions is common, and it is not difficult to find examples of inappropriate leaf blower use. I submit that when leaf blowers are used in violation of the existing bylaws, that's why Article 10 was filed, or largely why Article 10 was filed. There are many reasons for the lack of compliance, but the town deserves some of the blame. Brookline could do a better job educating the public about when and how leaf blowers are allowed to be used. The Noise Bylaw Review Committee's recommendations provide a guide for how our community can improve awareness about the rules that govern leaf blowers, and the recommendations suggest common-sense steps that can be taken to improve the effectiveness and compliance with existing leaf blower restrictions. The Selectmen believe before further restricting or totally banning any type of leaf blower, effort should be undertaken to better educate and enforce the rules currently in place. We plan to do this by adopting recommendations of the Noise Bylaw Review Committee. This work has already begun and will continue after the close of Town Meeting. Additional arguments in support of a vote of favorable action on Article 10 have been made on the basis of health and climate change concerns. Regarding health concerns. Brookline's Advisory Council on Public Health determined that there is no compelling public health threat posed by leaf blowers to support a ban, and that public health should not be a reason to ban leaf blowers. The Board respects this expert opinion of the Advisory Council on Public Health, and following their determination sees the issue of leaf blower's health impacts as settled. The Selectmen do, however, urge all operators of leaf blowers to use proper eye, ear, and mouth protection, as is recommended by manufacturers and several trade and health groups. On the potential climate change impact of petroleum-powered leaf blowers, based on the voluminous amount of information submitted to the Board, we believe that leaf blowers may have an impact on climate change, but that potential impact is small. Instead of focusing on gasoline-powered leaf blowers, the Selectmen prefer to focus on large causes of climate change, like the generation of electricity, which was the subject of Articles thirteen and fourteen last evening. I note that the Selectmen's Climate Action Committee and the Green Caucus, two groups that frequently advise Town Meeting on climate change issues, both declined to take a position on Article 10.
You're, one minute.
I believe you gave me eight minutes, Mr. Moderator.
I'm sorry, I did. You're right.
In short, the Selectmen ask you to reject Article 10 and give us time to implement other possible solutions that will address the concerns that have been raised and improve the current situation. I wish to quickly speak to Town Meeting Member Schwartz's motion to refer Article 10 to a moderators' committee. The Selectmen urge rejection of this motion, again on the grounds that actions are underway outside of the debate on Article 10 to improve the regulation of leaf blowers. It would be premature to abandon the existing bylaw governing leaf blowers before success or failure of these efforts is known. In essence, don't throw the baby out with the bathwater. Turning to Article 11. Article 11 would give the Commission of Public Works the power to temporarily allow the use of gasoline-powered leaf blowers outside of the normally-permitted times of year in the event of a significant storm. The need to grant the Commission this power became clear this spring after the tough winter that saw snow on the ground late into the spring landscaping season, significantly constraining the time available to clean up and prepare for the growing season. Granting the Commission this power would have the additional benefit of allowing leaf blowers to be used to assist with the cleanup of a significant summer storm, like the hailstorm that occurred this past August. For these reasons, the Board recommends favorable action on Article 11 that is moved by the advisory committee. In closing, the Board appreciates the passion of both proponents and opponents of Article 10, and we recognize that persistent complaints about leaf blowers signal that additional investigation and action is needed to protect residents' quality of life. The Board has identified actionable steps that the town will take over the next few months should Article 10 fail that we believe will result in an improvement. We believe it would be premature to either totally ban certain types of leaf blowers or to totally rewrite the bylaw before the effectiveness of the identified steps is known. We know action is required, and we intend to take action. The Board recommends and asks for a vote of "no action" on Article 10 and a vote of "favorable action" on the motion offered by the advisory committee on Article 11.
Point of order, Mr. Moderator.
Yeah, Mr. Spiegel.
In as much as the-
Uh, who are you?
Stanley Spiegel from Precinct Two. I apologize.
Yes, sir.
In as much as the co-petitioners of Article 10 have both indicated support of referral, will you direct Town Meeting now to direct remarks solely to referral versus "no action" on Article 10? I just want to know how to prepare my remarks, which will come later, and what's your ruling on that?
If your question is how we will vote on the three motions before us, we will vote first on the referral motion.
I understand that.
And if the referral motion passes, then we will proceed to the motion under Article 11.
That wasn't quite my question. My question was-
What was your question?
Given that the two co-petitioners have now said they both support referral, is there going to be a vote taken on favorable action? And the answer is yes or no, and if it is yes, I'll know that, and if it's no, I'll know that.
If the motion to refer fails, we will vote on the motion under Article 10.
Fair enough. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Lynn Jones? No, please be seated. We'll have remarks later on.
I just had a question for Mr. Franco.
Well, you can save your question for the Q&amp;A period, which will come along fairly shortly. There are a lot of speakers that have prepared for this article. Mr. Lynn Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Sean Lynn Jones from Precinct One, speaking for the advisory committee. On Article 10, the advisory committee met last night and voted to reconsider our initial recommendation, which was for "no action." We now recommend a favorable vote on the motion to refer offered by Mr. Schwartz. We also considered the petitioner's latest motion for favorable action under Article 10, and we voted to oppose it, although as Mr. Spiegel just pointed out, maybe that's a moot point at this point. On Article 11, however, we continue to recommend favorable action on the article as amended. Because Article 10 has generated the most debate and controversy, I will focus on it. And I want to give you five reasons why you should vote to refer. First, it would allow more time to assess the steps recommended, and I hope being implemented, as per the report of the Noise Bylaw Committee. And I want to thank Mr. Franco and everyone who served on that Noise Bylaw Committee for their work and for an excellent report. The moderators' committee could continue working on the broader issues while those steps were implemented, and the moderators' committee would have the opportunity to assess how well those new policies were working. Second reason, voting to refer would enable a moderators' committee to follow up on some of the broader recommendations of the Noise Bylaw Committee. It offered some recommendations that go well beyond just implementing proposals that can be implemented immediately, require some rewriting of bylaws, possible formulation of one or more new warrant articles, the tricky issue of how to define portable that we've grappled with before, and new ideas such as finding a way maybe to cite the property owner for a violation of the bylaw, as well as the contractor. And I think a moderators' committee could explore those very effectively. Voting to, third, voting to refer also would enable a moderators' committee to go beyond the recommendations of the Noise Bylaw Committee. Could look more closely at what other communities around the United States are doing, could explore some creative solutions to the core problem of too much annoying noise, and I'll leave it to others who've already indicated to me, including Mr. Schwartz, that they've thought of some of these more creative ideas, but they're not part of the Noise Bylaw Committee's recommendations. They really need to be, you know, fleshed out and developed by a moderators' committee. Fourth, if we refer this to a moderators' committee, it would be a great opportunity to resolve some of the disputes over the basic data. We've had arguments and reports saying that there is very little or no threat to public health from the operation of leaf blowers, and we've had claims that there's a very significant threat. I'm not sure where the truth is, but these are pretty diametrically opposed arguments. Even more important, we've had some claims on how much more it would cost if we were to ban leaf blowers in general or just gas-powered. Some of those claims come from contractors, and, you know, I don't want to impugn their motives, but they may not be the most objective estimates. A moderators' committee could look at that and get a sense of what it really would cost if we were to go further in banning leaf blowers. But the fifth, and the most important reason why I think voting to refer is the best choice, is that it might just enable us to find some common ground on this very contentious issue. There are legitimate arguments and advocates on both sides. Outright "no action" or a straight-up favorable action vote would dismiss the concerns of a very large number of residents either way. There might be a need for a cooling-off period and an attempt at consensus, and with a little bit more time, we might be able to move forward in a more productive way. Usually, moving to refer is the second choice of both proponents and opponents. On Article 10, however, referral is the right choice, and it should be our first choice. So on Article 10, by a vote of nineteen to four with two abstentions, the advisory committee recommends favorable action on the motion to refer. And on Article 11, the advisory committee unanimously recommends favorable action on the amended motion. Thank you.
Mr. Lynn Jones, did the advisory committee take a position on Article 10 if we have a vote on that? I mean, if the motion to refer fails, we vote on Article 10. Did the advisory committee-
The advisory committee voted last night when it reconsidered its position on Article 10, and we did take a vote on the petitioner's revised motion. That vote was a vote, a no vote, fifteen in favor of voting no, five opposed, and five abstaining. So does that answer your question?
Yes, it certainly does. Mr. Fisher?
I have a-
Who are you?
I have a presentation. If I could, I'll cue it in a minute. If-
Mr. Fisher, please identify yourself.
Thank you. Andrew Fisher, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Thirteen. And I'm speaking for the planet and my grandchildren. If, if we go to the doctor and discover that we're terminally ill, or the doctor tells us, "If you don't do these things to change your diet or your lifestyle, you're going to die," we do what the doctor says generally. We stop eating fatty foods. We stop eating sweets. If that's not enough, we do other things to change, to change how we live. Well, we've gotten the message regarding our planet. Can we show the video clip? We've gotten the message about our planet in terms of carbon. If we don't stop eating carbon and throwing it into the atmosphere, what's going to happen to our planet? I have a, the video that you're going to see is what the planet will look like when the oceans rise as a result of our failure to stop using carbon. At the end of the video, you'll see where Boston, where Boston and the area where we're sitting now is underwater. So we can change our diet or change our lifestyle, or we can say goodbye to Brookline. We really need to change the way we live, and as I think about the things that we need to do differently in the way we consume fossil fuels, what are, where are the places we can start?
Mr. Fisher, do we really need the soundtrack in this video?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. We don't.
Thank you.
Where are the things that we can start? What are the things that we can do without? Well, we managed up until, from the time we began cultivating gardens and maintaining lawns thousands of years ago, perhaps, until maybe the last twenty-five years, we managed very well without leaf blowers. Even large golf courses, like the country club, larger estates, managed to, well, you know, sometimes we didn't clean all the leaves off. That was okay. There's no reason we couldn't do that today. I was on a bike ride to raise money for an environmental cause in, that ended up in Eilat, Israel, which is at the end of the Negev Desert. It's pretty hot there, and you go there, it's a big tourist city, and they have a, they have a, in the middle of the city, they have an ice, they have a skating rink. It's an ice skating rink. Why they need to have, and it's empty most of the time. I understand in the United Arab Emirates, there is a ski slope. And, but just because we can have a ski slope in the United Arab Emirates, or just because we can build an ice rink in the desert in Israel, doesn't mean we should or that it's a good idea. Just because we can hire people to take, to take a two-cycle engine that spits carbon monoxide unnecessarily into the air to blow the sidewalk on Beacon Street, doesn't mean we have to do it. And maybe it's a good idea if we don't do it. I'm here to suggest that we need to start thinking about how we live our lives individually and as a community in a way that's going to save our terminally-ill planet. And I think leaf blowers is as frivolous a thing as, as the most unnecessary chocolate we eat to do away with. If people have a better idea or something else that we could do without, or some other way we can change, I'm pleased to engage in that dialogue. I've been accused on the TMMA list of accusing others of being climate deniers. I don't think that anyone here denies climate change, but I think we're all denying the role we play and can play in addressing the issue. It's very easy to say, "Well, leaf blowers aren't a big deal. We want to do bigger things." Well, I want to do bigger things, too, but it doesn't mean we should skip the smaller things. And so I'm here to ask us all to think about what are the engines that we don't need to burn fuel with? What are the ways we can, people know already that I bicycle here rather than drive here. I challenge others to do that. I've listened to the earlier speakers, and I recognize that banning leaf blowers is a big step. I recognize that the town, people, people who operate DPW and do an excellent job, people who maintain the parks and do an excellent job, say they need leaf blowers. Well, I'm not sure I agree with that, but I've-
You have one minute.
I'm getting to the end. Thank you. But I'm impressed, but I'm persuaded by Selectman Franco that we, that an outright ban might be premature at this time. I am, I listened to Ms. Michael's remarks and am willing to challenge her to work, to work together, to find common ground, as Mr. Lynn Jones suggested. to find common ground, as Mr. Lynn Jones suggested, as a way to, perhaps, perhaps we don't need to outright ban leaf blowers if the people who use them irresponsibly now were to recognize the harm they're doing by the irresponsible use. And perhaps we can have a program of education that would work, and maybe we can sit down and find a way to do things in a way that makes sense, that limits the use to what's necessary, in a way that we need to limit our diets of fossil fuel in a way that's necessary. I walked with my grandchildren, I'm wrapping up, Mr. Moderator. I walked with my grand, my two granddaughters, this--
Are you concluding?
I am concluding. This is my concluding remark. To the playground, with my four-year-old and two-year-old granddaughter, and watched them kick the leaves as we walked down the sidewalk. We don't need to remove every leaf. In fact, if we did that, we would deprive children--
This doesn't sound like a conclusion, Mr. Fisher.
We don't need to remove every leaf. We do need to remove the use of fossil fuel. I would recommend referral and see if we can work out an accommodation that works for the town.
Thank you, Mr. Doggett.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, everybody. John Doggett, precinct thirteen. Do we have a first slide, please? Thank you. The town estimates there are fifty thousand trees in our streets, open spaces and parks, and this does not include the countless more trees in our yards. A mature tree is said to have about two hundred thousand leaves, so at this time of year, these trees will drop literally billions and billions of leaves. You've heard tonight from landscapers and a resident as to why gas-powered leaf blowers are necessary to effectively clean up the vast leaf drop we experience. The petitioners, however, would have us believe that the environmental cost is too great. So let's just first take a look at what the effect of leaf blowers is on climate change. Slide, please. As you can see, this pie chart shows sources of emissions of carbon for the entire United States, and the EPA data shows power plants and transportation creating over eighty-six, sixty-eight percent of carbon emissions. Dr. Jamie Banks of Quiet Communities in Lincoln and Bob McConnell of the EPA found that all gas-powered lawn and garden equipment, including mowers, tractors, trimmers, and of course, leaf blowers, combined create only point-three percent of carbon emissions. They found that leaf blowers are about ten percent, that's about eleven million at the time they did the study, units, of the total of this GLGE, they call it. They are responsible for at most, as you can see, point zero, zero-point-zero-three percent of carbon emissions. Now, before we consider leaf blower exhaust emissions, which we'll do in a little bit, let's look at our baseline air quality. Slide, please. The air quality index comprises measures of gassed exhausts, excuse me, exhaust gases and dust in our air as tracked and monitored by the Mass Department of Environmental Protection. As you can see, our air quality has been rated good, the highest rating by the EPA, and has been that way for the last ten years. Now, let's take a look at the contribution of leaf blowers make to volatile exhaust emissions. Slide, please. All gas and diesel engines, as well as solvents and paints, and any kind of burning, in fact, will emit chemical pollutants known as volatile organic compounds, they're called VOCs. It's these VOCs which, when in high concentrations, such as indoors or in lab animal experiments, have been associated with disease. From the pie chart, you can see that solvents and coatings, paint, for example, account for almost half of these potentially harmful emissions, and on-road traffic and off-road equipment account for the other half. Leaf blowers alone account for less than point-one percent of VOC emissions. This is in Massachusetts. Let's take a look at dust. Slide, please. Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection also monitors and tracks the amount of dust in our air. Health concerns have been raised about the effects of fine dust, that is, two-point-five microns or less in size. From their residential, from their data, residential industrial fuel burning, such as wood stoves, accounts for forty percent of fine dust emissions. Other major sources include road traffic, construction, and that's another forty-nine percent. Again, leaf blowers alone emit less than point-zero-nine percent of fine dust emissions in Massachusetts. It should be clear by now that banning gas leaf blowers and their emissions would have no significant impact on our overall air quality. Slide, please. Nonetheless, what about the local dust stirred up by leaf blower operations? The proponents suggest we should all use rakes or brooms, or perhaps even electric blowers. Slide seven. At the University of California Riverside, Fitzette Al studied this. In a controlled scientific environment seen here, they measured dust stirred up through the cleaning of different surfaces, such as lawn, concrete, and asphalt, and a rake, and with a brake, a broom, and gas and electric blowers. Whatever surface they cleaned, they found gas blowers raised an equivalent amount of dust as electric blowers. On lawns, they found raking and blowing raised an equivalent amount of dust. And on concrete, they found that sweeping and blowing raised equivalent amount of dust. Because the large, great majority of the ground dust is large particles that you can see, it settles relatively fast to the ground.
You have one minute.
As shown by this plume dissipate, thank you, Mr. Moderator, plume dissipation findings shown on the other, shown on this slide in one of their blower tests. Within five to ten minutes, the dust has more than half dissipated and settled into the ambient level. But what about noise? Slide, please. Me, too. Since powerful electric blowers are no less noisy than gas-powered blowers, restricting landscapers and residents to electric blowers for seasonal leaf cleanup will certainly be efficient, but not noticeably improve our urban noise level. Slide, please. One year ago, the Selectmen responding to the town meeting's noise concern set up a committee to examine the issues. The town has not yet had any time in which to implement these recommendations. Referral of this issue to committee, I believe, is not the best way forward. A better way forward is executive action to ensure implementation of current recommendations and facilitate best practices with the help and input of the landscape community. I've shown you that Article 10 will not protect us from climate change, it will not protect us from unhealthy pollution, nor will it protect us from noise.
Please conclude.
Thank you. It will do, what it will do is create divisiveness, increase the workload for our police department, and leave our town in a mess. Slide, please. Please join me and vote no action on 10 and no action on the motion to refer. Thank you.
Mr. Vitolo?
Tommy Vitolo, town meeting member, precinct six. Although I will indeed vote yes if Warren Article 10 comes to an up or down, I don't expect I'll have the opportunity. I suspect that Mr. Schwartz's referral motion will pass, and his is motion I will be supporting. I'm young enough to have lived my whole life in the leaf-blowing era, but I believe that it is, in fact, hyperbole that we've heard on this issue. Massive cost increases, tremendous pollution, scores of broken hips from slip and falls, Dust Bowl-era clouds of particulates, and clear-cutting of deciduous trees, a dispatching of Doctors Without Borders to tend to landscaping employees' damaged ears, a separate dispatching to tend to landscaping employees' sore backs, and leaf blowers wielding senior citizens' heart attacks, the disastrous loss of seasonal habitat facing insects, the acres of scorched turf resulting from oppressive non-blown leaves, flash flooding due to clogged storm drains, and if we had another few weeks to discuss, a countryside covered in frogs, diseased livestock, locusts, and eventually, a final plague that would alleviate the school overcrowding.
Easy, Mr.
Prohibiting gas-powered leaf blowers on residential and small commercial properties won't increase landscaping costs by three to five times current costs. It won't keep the ice caps from melting either. So what would happen? Costs might go up for some customers, sure. Landscapers would remove ninety-nine-point-nine percent of the billions of leaves instead of ninety-nine-point-nine-nine-nine percent, and Brookline's front lawns might no longer be suitable for playing golf in the midst of a New England autumn. We'd have more rakes, we'd have more brooms, too. The smog-inducing emissions of non-methane hydrocarbons, the byproduct of two-stroke engines, but not substantially from automobiles or power plants, would be reduced considerably in Brookline, and landscapers who insist on living and dying by the gasoline-powered leaf blower will do more work in Newton, Wellesley, and Dedham, whereas landscapers interested in transitioning to lower-impact work will discover new business opportunities in our town. Oh, one more thing. If we broadly restrict the use of gasoline-powered leaf blowers in Brookline year-round, things will be noticeably quieter during the day, both on weekdays and weekends. For me, a quieter neighborhood in spring and fall outweighs the apparent convenience a leaf blower provides a landscaper. Others weigh things differently. I'm grateful that our community has had this broader discussion because, at the very least, we now know that the landscaping industry is perfectly capable of organizing, studying the law, and communicating amongst themselves. It's clear that landscapers now know the existing rules and regulations, and by their own insistence, favor enforcement and education. I hope that, should Warren Article 10 be referred, Commissioner Papa Sturgeon, Chief O'Leary, and Town Administrator Kleckner don't differ when it comes to enforcement of our existing rules and regulations. Should referral fail, I hope you'll vote in favor of Warren Article 10. But let's vote referral, and a referral in the spirit of last night's action on Warren Article 12. Let's support a good study group, a broad set of considerations, a thorough review of available alternatives to gas-powered leaf blowers, and a sense of urgency for bringing something back to this body within a year. Let's support more aggressive, widespread, and consistent enforcement of the rules and regs on the books now, and let's vote referral. Thank you.
Mr. Spiegel?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm waiting for something to appear. Yes, thank you. Well, my remarks will be different now than they would have been.
Mr. Spiegel.
Stanley Spiegel, precinct two, if I remember correctly.
You at two, Spiegel.
In any case, I thank you for that. I'm going to go through these slides fairly quickly because most of the points have been touched on already. If I can get to the next slide, that we've heard that there's no demonstrable health risks, the town's council on public health has found none. There is some speculation, but nothing has been demonstrated. It's a case that the plumes, the fumes, and so on can be fairly easily evaded. It's not the most convenient thing to cross the street, but it can be done, and in any event, we see no real pressing problems. Next slide, please. The impact on climate, similarly, there's been absolutely no evidence to show that there's any measurable or discernible risk. As a matter of fact, if I may get to the very next to the last line here, advocating a ban to oppose climate change is, in my view, like advocating the use of bottle deposits to help somebody who's suffering from credit card debt. It's such a tiny insignificant fraction of what we really need to focus on, and I believe we really should focus on climate change. I'm suggesting that it would be better to spend efforts on things like seeking more funding for public transit and arguing for more funding for tax breaks for renewable energy and fewer for gas and oil exploration. That's where we should, that's where the payoff is, that's where we should put our efforts in. This is a feel-good diversion. It's good to feel good, it's good to do what we can, but the question is, is this worth spending so much time and effort on? As far as costs go, here's something which I really found to be disturbing, to tell you the truth, and that is, how can we go forward and even think about this ban without producing ahead-of-time estimates as to what it will cost our fellow citizens? Newton is doing this. Before their Board of Alderman, there were several landscapers were called in to give their estimates. Now, my chair of the advisory committee suggested there might be bias. Landscapers are just going to make money, they don't care how they do it especially. The main thing is, what would they charge? And take, well, you've heard already the anomaly between letting the country club and some of the colleges not pay anything extra, but the homeowners who can perhaps least afford it are the ones who'll be stuck with the bill. So if we can go to the next slide, please. And there's just one excerpt from what was presented to the Newton Board of Alderman, namely, and you can see what the cost differential would be between using brooms and rakes and using leaf blowers. In many cases, a thousand dollars, two, it depends on the size of the property. This is one landscaper's estimate. Others were worse. They were just, I got tired of entering numbers on my computer screen. On the other hand, maybe they're wrong, but at a minimum, one would think that the proponents, or at least those of us who've studied this to present guidance to town meeting, should have provided town meeting members with the reliable estimate as to how much the cost would be for homeowners of various-sized properties. We don't have that, and that's the sort of thing that I would hope a moderators committee could produce. If we can go to the next slide, and this seems to be where we're going. So I say a moderators committee with a wide range of stakeholders, and this is important, you want to have landscapers, you want to have big property owners, small property owners, people from a variety of income levels, ages, walks of life, sitting together, and to calmly seek common ground and achieve consensus. And when I say calmly, folks, we're not combating bubonic plague here. We're combating, we're talking about leaf blowers, and it's something that we can deal with. Let's indeed implement the recommendations of Ben Franco's Committee for Education and Enforcement. But the problem with Warren Article 10 is it was brought up and drawn together without the kind of broad-based input which should be done before any article is ripe for consideration by town meeting. That's the problem that I find most disturbing.
One minute.
We should reason together for a solution that will serve the entire town. I finally have to add one more personal note, but it reflects on this. If we get to the final slide, almost a third of our constituents live in or near poverty. The town lacks sufficient affordable housing. Many of our children go to school hungry. These are all issues worthy of our passionate involvement, but leaf blowers? Leaf blowers? Thank you very much, I appreciate your hearing me out. Thank you.
Well, I think we ought to hear from Mr. Schwartz, who's the sponsor of the referral motion, and then I'll take that motion, the motion for the question. Mr. Schwartz?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Chuck Schwartz, precinct nine. From listening to these arguments, from listening to what Ms. Michaels, Mr. Franco, Mr. Fisher, and Mr. Nango had to say, it seems like we all want the same thing, and that everybody is making the argument that we should refer this to a moderators committee. Everybody wants to work together. What better way than to do it through a moderators committee? Now, for me, it's personal. I don't like the noise from leaf blowers. I don't like the dust that it kicks up. I don't like looking out my window and seeing leaves being blown onto the street, blowing onto other people's property. Now, I live in Center Street. One side of Center Street is made up of single-family homes, the other side of Center Street is made up of apartment buildings, senior housing, and leaf blowers frequently come, whether it's during the ban or during the times that they're allowed. They come in twos or threes, they operate between buildings, the noise is really amplified, it's magnified, it's really hard to deal with. This concerns me. There are often times during the summer, people come when they're not allowed, and they keep coming back. I speak with them, I speak to property owners, but they keep coming back. This concerns me. So when Article 10 came about, I said, "Oh, great. It's a way of dealing with this once and for all. It would eliminate the confusion." However, going to the subcommittee hearings, listening to both sides, I thought that, you know, something better needs to come of this, a better leaf blower bill. And it suggested the town really, people, both, all parties really need to work together. And what better way to do this than through a moderators committee? A committee that can look at things that are done in other towns, such as what's done in Arlington and Cambridge. Some of these things are requiring one brand and one model of leaf blower for all landscapers to use, it makes enforcement a lot easier, limiting the number of blowers by the size of the property, also blowing from the outside, from the perimeter towards the center, so you prevent leaves from being blown onto other people's property. These are things that I think would benefit us all. are things that I think would benefit us all. Also, I just wanted to mention that Lincoln and Newton, as already been mentioned, are looking into leaf blower bans. And as you saw before, there are many other cities and towns in the country that have, that already have bans. We can work to find something that will work for all of us here in Brookline. I think a new policy that would incorporate some of the suggestions made by the Selectmen's Noise Bylaw Committee could be enacted. I mean, these are suggestions that would require a vote of town meeting anyways, so why not incorporate that into something that the moderator, moderator's committee could look at? We need a policy that would make the rules easier to understand and easier to enforce. Now, I know that we live in an urban environment, but we really need to protect the citizens of Brookline from excessive noise, just as we protect the citizens of Brookline from noise that comes from loud parties. So let's take advantage of this opportunity now and get it right. Please support the motion for referral to a moderator's committee. Thank you.
Okay, I'll allow the motion for the question. Is there a second? The, I have the following speakers listed to speak in favor of Article 10, Mr. Richmond, Mr. Polenbaum, Ms. Bernard, Mr. Rosenthal, and Ms. Sawyer. I have two speakers in favor of referral, Mr. Gordon and Mr. Boers, and the following speakers oppose Article 10. Ms. Gross, Ms. Con, I'm sorry, Ms. Con is in favor of Article 11, not opposed to 10. Mr. Hall, Mr. Berger, Mr. Levitan, Mr. Knight, Mr. White, Mr. Basili, Monica Bertolucci, and Monica Allen. Against that background, the motion to terminate debate requires a two-thirds vote. Those in favor, please raise your hands. Those opposed, motion carries by a two-thirds vote. We will vote first on the referral motion, and that will be an electronic vote. If the referral motion passes, we will not vote on Article 10. If the referral vote motion fails, we will vote on Article 10. In either case, whether or not the motion to refer passes or fails, we will vote on the motion under Article 11. The referral motion is found on page 10-6. This is Article 10 referral motion. To refer the subject matter of Article 10 to a moderator's committee with the request that the preliminary report be presented at the Spring 2016 Town Meeting with the goal that a new warrant article, if indicated, be presented to the Fall 2016 Town Meeting. I beg your pardon? Well, we aren't in the, we haven't started the voting period yet. Okay, you can click away to your heart's content, but you won't be recorded until Okay, the timer has started. You have 60 seconds. Those in favor of the referral motion, please raise your hand and press one, I'm, yes, press one on your handheld device. Those opposed to the referral motion, raise your hand and press two. Those abstaining, press Change your vote anytime during the voting period, and if your red light lit up, your vote was recorded, and you can check that on the screen. The referral motion carries by a vote of 143 in favor, 57 opposed, and two abstentions, undoubtedly the town clerk and myself. We will not vote on Article 10, but we will proceed to the motion under Article 11, which is found on page 11-5. Those in favor of the motion under Article 11, please raise your hands. Those opposed, raise your hands. That motion carries by a majority vote. Now, I've got two moderator's committees to appoint, and likely am going to have to appoint four members of a committee to be formed under Article 15 if Ms. Frawley's proposal passes town meeting. I would ask any of you who wish to serve on any of these two or three committees, and with respect to Article 15, be a moderator appointee to that committee, to contact me as soon as possible. I'm going to be out of town for four of the next six weeks, and it's important to get these committees organized and started on their work before the end of the year. I also appeal to the vast numbers of people out there in our television audience to, who are not disqualified from serving on these committees. I'd be happy to hear from any of them. We turn now to Article 15. The motion offered under Article 15 is found on page 15-4 over to page 15-6, moved by Ms. Frawley, seconded by Ms. Heller, that the town adopt a resolution relating to the, a committee to be formed to study eminent domain in South Brookline. Ms. Frawley, you have 10 minutes. I'm sorry, the second was by Ms. Hardabek.
That was too good to be true. Apologies in advance. I do have a PowerPoint.
Ms. Frawley, who are you? Who are you?
I don't know. I'm Regina Frawley from Precinct 16. And my computer PowerPoint died after 4 o'clock today. I was busy reconstituting it, and thanks to Mark in the booth, whatever we do, we do, but some of what I say won't match what's up there. All right. So, Article 15. I want a Blue Ribbon Committee to study in good faith the possible taking of green buffers behind Beverly and Russett Roads, if necessary by eminent domain, to create park, publicly accessible park space. The history. Town meeting overwhelmingly supported Article 18 to study in good faith last May. The recommendations were made, to be made, from that study was to be made two weeks prior to the filing deadlines. That did not happen. The petitioner was assured in February that the Selectmen would have no role in this, and they supported that by abstaining in the spring. And that, therefore, when I did the wording, the Selectmen study, I did it with the understanding that the town administrator would have to pull together a committee, not the Selectmen. There were no red flags. I must have done eight presentations, public presentations. Nobody said there wouldn't be a committee. But on June 12, the town administrator wrote a memo saying that there would not be a citizens' committee. It would be probably a committee in-house of, of a consultant communicating with the town. He recommended no citizens' committee, but also no staff, because there'd be some serious doubt thanks to the two lawsuits that were going on. However, two weeks later, he changed his mind. And this time, he said that it would be a committee of staff, in-house staff, along with a consultant. The Selectmen, too, reversed their course. They changed their mind about abstaining, and they now supported no citizens' committee. And indeed, there was no citizens' committee. It came to my attention recently that some people don't understand how important good faith is in the law. I kind of assumed that people did, but they...
Yeah, Ms. Frawley, I've asked you to leave good faith and bad faith out of your presentation.
I'm sorry?
I've asked, asked you to leave good faith and bad faith out of your presentation. I don't want to hear about good faith and bad faith.
This is about the law cases. Good faith matters in law. It's not about them.
Try me.
So in eminent domain, it can be invalidated if a court finds that the taking was made in bad faith. It's a governing principle of general law, and has been cited in multiple Massachusetts cases concerning affordable housing. It is a landmine, and will be used with Hancock Village. So the whole point of Article 18, and now 15, is to avoid that landmine. The town is involved in two law cases, both in the appellate and land court. They've already, I believe, lost one motion. We don't know what's going to happen. Having said that, I'm trying to avoid all of that pitfalls. So a good faith, I'm asking for prudence from town meeting to establish a truly objective group. There's arguments to be made, and a Blue Ribbon Panel would hopefully have public meetings and public hearings. That would be great, because the current reports that you're going to hear never did have that. The elephant in the room is, of course, what's proposed there, and that was brought up last June, so I do have to address that. There are some cases, two cases involving eminent domain against the Chapter 40B. One did win, one lost. Both of them were, were decided in part on good faith versus bad faith. So that is what, what we're trying to establish here, is that we have a clean record, and it's going to be good faith. You can tell I had to do this at 5 o'clock. There are arguments to be made, and you heard most of them last spring, so I'll skip that part right now, and, but say that town meeting may not realize that you are the body that will just make a vote as to whether there should be an eminent domain after any report comes in that's persuasive to you. You're also the body that votes the finance for it. You make that decision. The Selectmen just have to choose whether they sign or don't sign. So the biggest onus, the biggest responsibility and duty is on town meeting. And that's true just in general about eminent domain takings. It's the legislative branch, and that's you. So, let's see if I can go to number, number 19, please. You're going to hear that what was testified last week at the Board of Selectmen is that not only will this land be expensive, but it's very likely that Chapter 40B proposed development would be factored into the cost. That's not true. The, I, I had the great cooperation of our state representative, Ed Carpenter, who assigned one of his staff attorneys to look into this. There's absolutely no evidence that that can be done or will be done. There's just simply no evidence. In fact, he came up with an example of eminent domain taking on prime commercial real estate land, and yes, the jury did vote more money than the town had offered, but only on the basis of the current value of that land at the time of the taking. So there's no evidence, one way or the other, what will happen. There's no case law on it. So we're back to what we need is, number 21, please. A need for a Blue Ribbon Committee. A Blue Ribbon Committee, some of you are old enough to have heard of Pabst Blue Ribbon Beer. It's considered a very high standard of excellence, and that's what I'm looking for, the same self-confidence that no matter what the recommendations of that committee is, and it's certainly not going to be clear to me what those recommendations will be, that I will feel confident that they gave it a rigorous scholarly approach, and not just an in-house approach with conflicts. There have been other examples at the State House, the, the Blue Ribbon Panel on the public employees, and the Kitty and Mike Dukakis did, had a major summit, Blue Ribbon Summit, on financing the Mass Bay Transportation Authority and regional transit authorities just five years ago. In Brookline, I would say that while we haven't used the term "blue ribbon," we had a citizens' complaint committee. I attended nearly every one of those meetings. It was excellent, and it was based on a resolution filed by Marty Rosenthal. And it came together, and it was deliberation in public. It was wonderful. So I would call that the kind of standards I'm looking for. The moderator doesn't call anything he does "blue ribbon," but he is happy with several of the committees he's put together, and he's particularly happy with the electoral process, that committee that served town meeting, but there are others as well. So in conclusion, let's remember Article 18. Article 18, you overwhelmingly supported, and I thank you for that. We're the only precinct in town without a park. Only one. That's just simply not walkable. We can go to Boston, or we can go to Lars Anderson, which is close to two miles from my house.
You have one minute.
Thank you. But that's not a walkable park, and we're going to end up being the only precinct in town that doesn't have it if we don't at least take a real, authentic, objective, scholarly shot at looking at this. So, some people think this is only about process. There's enough lawyers in the room that know that process is the number-one reason a case is won or lost. If you mess up the process, you've messed up the conclusion. So let's make this process something that's public, transparent, and yes, these people can keep confidential information confidential when they need to. They have the power to go into executive session. That's one of the contentious issues that have now been resolved, and I knew they could go into executive session. And let's move forward and help my neighborhood to have a real shot at whether or not we ever, ever have a park in South Brookline. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heller. And I apologize if I misinterpreted you, Ms. Frawley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Nancy Heller for the unanimous Board of Selectmen recommending no action on this article. As Ms. Frawley has said, the warrant article follows the resolution from the 2015 Town Meeting, which asked the Board of Selectmen to study and consider in good faith the taking by eminent domain of the two buffer zones in Hancock Village. The Board of, Board of Selectmen then directed the town administrator to create a staff team of the planning director, the director of parks and open space, the building commissioner, the chief assessor, the deputy town administrator, and town council. The petitioner of last spring's article had expected, as she said, that a committee of citizens would be appointed, but the language of the warrant article didn't require it. And given the complexity of the issues involved, including ongoing litigation over the Hancock Village project, the board determined that a team comprised of staff would be in the best position to identify, explore, and document the issues raised by the May Town Meeting article, and provide a sound framework for decision-makers within the short timeframe the article contemplated. It was very short, only until August. We were unable to meet that very short deadline, but did commit to completing the report before this town meeting, and it is included in your packet following page 15-9. In our view, it is very professionally done and thorough, and the Board of Select- In our view, it is very professionally done and thorough, and the Board of Selectmen wishes to commend our staff for their efforts. The components of the study included analysis of, number one, whether recreational space is needed in Precinct 16. Number two, a history of efforts undertaken by the town to protect the area referred to as the green buffer within Hancock Village. Number three, preliminary estimated valuation of the area proposed for the taking. And number four, a review of the legal issues that would likely arise if the town were to proceed with eminent domain. Director of Open Space, Erin Gallantine, and I, in my role as liaison to the Board of Selectmen, organized and held several meetings with citizens to examine the issues of recreational space in Precinct 16. And those meetings and those findings are documented in the report. Town Council, Jocelyn Murphy, met with the petitioner to ensure that the study team had all relevant material that she was aware of, and further engaged the services of Special Counsel John Leonard, who has extensive experience in and knowledge, the use of eminent domain in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. He advised the board on the extremely complex and difficult eminent domain process and considerable risks that are associated with such takings. There are several reasons to support no action. Number one, a blue ribbon committee is simply unnecessary. An excellent study has already been done. Number two, petitioner implies that good faith requires the appointment of this blue ribbon committee. But in any legal battle, over an eminent domain action, and we are certain that a legal battle would ensue in this case, good faith is illegal arena, in the legal arena of eminent domain, is not determined by convening a committee and entitling it a good faith committee and appointing as objective citizens as you possibly can. Rather, the determination by the court will turn on several factors, including the history of the town's actions in regard to the land in question. The timing of last spring's warrant article, for instance, submitted after the comprehensive permit under Chapter 40B was granted, would certainly be considered as a part of the history of the town's actions. Town staff, number three, town staff have been unable to find any records supporting petitioner's assertion that citizens committees have been established to study eminent domain takings in the past. In 1957, the Brookline Redevelopment Authority was authorized and empowered to conduct takings for the purposes of land assembly and redevelopment projects. This, however, this authority was not a citizens committee, but instead, a duly authorized authority with powers of eminent domain under existing law at the time. And it does not exist, the BRA does not exist at this time. If the town were to pursue eminent domain proceedings, the Board of Selectmen is a sole authority that is authorized to execute the order of taking. The warrant article seeks to separate the Board of Selectmen from the good faith/bad faith determination, but that cannot be accomplished because the Board of Selectmen has by law the ultimate authority and burden of executing the order of taking. Number five, the committee that is proposed under this article would likely seek staff support and the ability to engage consultants. The warrant article sets no limits on this expenditure of town resources and staff time, and it is our view that it is neither prudent or necessary to commit to the expenditure of more town resources and staff time on a study which has already been done and done well. The members of the Board of Selectmen are aware that more information is needed, beginning with an independent, professional appraisal concerning valuation, since valuation will be a key component of a taking and will also be the source of protracted and costly litigation should the town pursue a taking. At the present time, the Board of Selectmen believes that the prudent course of action is to pursue the litigation that is underway and may have an impact on valuation as well as other issues. At its meeting last night, just before this town meeting, the Board of Selectmen reconsidered its previous vote in which two members had abstained. Since we took our first vote on this article, the report has now been issued and selectmen have now unanimously voted no action, and we urge you to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hardbeck.
Point of order.
No, Ms...
Point of order.
Better be a point of order.
Well, I think it is. Under a letter signed and approved subsequently by the town administrator, previously written to me by the previous town administrator, there would be 48 hours' notice on any reconsideration vote. I was never notified. That vote, therefore, is highly questionable. I wasn't there.
Thank you. Ms. Hardbeck.
Kelly Hardbeck, town meeting member from Precinct 7, speaking for the advisory committee. So, the advisory committee recommends favorable action on warrant Article 15 for really two reasons. If I were to summarize this in two bullet points, the first would be warrant Article 18 from Springtown 15 meeting and the report itself that was provided by this committee. So, as you've heard, Spring 15 town meeting passed warrant Article 18, which was a resolution to study the potential taking of these buffers in Precinct 16. The warrant article did not specifically discuss the composition of the committee, and the petitioner fully expected the study committee would be composed of both town and staff, thus guaranteeing an open public process for the composition of this report. However, the committee that was finally appointed to study the matter was composed exclusively of town staff and an outside consultant retained by the town for this purpose. As you've heard, the committee completed their work and delivered a report to the Board of Selectmen in early November. Number two is the report itself. The advisory committee appreciates the efforts that town staff and the consultant took to create the report and get it to the Board of Selectmen before town meeting. But we have reviewed the report and noted it does not address the fact that the land in question has been used for many, potentially up to 70 years, by the public for recreational purposes, and a de facto public easement may have been created. The existence of such an easement, therefore, would impact the property's potential for development and could significantly reduce its price and value. But most importantly, we feel that neither the committee that created the report or the report itself met the petitioner's objective of this open public process, and warrant Article 15 attempts to remedy this. The article itself is very specific about the composition of the committee, how the members are to be appointed, as you heard, four by the moderator and three by the advisory committee. And it also details a process for removing an appointee should their independence be in doubt. It is not a foregone conclusion that a blue ribbon committee would recommend an eminent domain taking of the buffers along Russet and Beverly Roads, but the advisory committee strongly believes that the subject wants further independent study and this committee could provide the much-needed analysis. By a vote of 18 to four with no abstentions, the advisory committee recommends favorable action.
Is Ms. Jonas here? Okay, on Ms. Fraley's motion on page 15-4, if there are 35 people who want an electronic vote, we'll have one. And there are, as usual. This is Article 15, main motion. You can start the timing period anytime. Okay, those in favor, please raise your hands and press 1. Those opposed, please raise your hands and press 2. Motion carries by a vote of 137 in favor, 42 opposed, and 11 abstentions. Article 16. The motion under Article 16 is on page 16-3, that the town adopt a resolution calling for a three-year moratorium on the use of high-stakes standard tests in public schools. The motion is contained entirely on page 16-3, moved by Ms. Heller and seconded by Mr. Franco. The motion is... The petitioners, citizens petitioners are also in favor of this motion. We... I have a great many speakers in this, particularly in favor of this motion.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Lisa Geisbahn. I live at 11 Gardner Road. I'm a public school parent in Brookline and I am the Executive Director of Citizens for Public Schools. Let me start with a short story. A businessman asked a teacher to give him a bottom-line answer to this question. What is the one thing that would solve all of our problems in public schools? Her answer? That's simple. What we need are fewer people who believe that there's one thing that would solve all of our problems in public schools. It's understandable why those who are not in classrooms every day or who don't have children in school right now could get the idea that there's a silver bullet answer to what ails public schools, especially urban public schools, and that silver bullet is high-stakes testing. But actually, we've been trying that experiment for more than 15 years, and it's clear that not only does a silver bullet not solve all of our problems, it's damaging a lot of the things that people value most about public education. So, I believe it's time for Brookline to go on record, as a number of other communities have in recent weeks and months, in support of this moratorium on the high-stakes uses of standardized tests in our schools. And by high stakes, we mean the use of test results to determine high school graduation, educator evaluation, and school and district performance. Do not be misled by those who say that we are calling for a three-year moratorium on testing and therefore would not have any test results to consider. I want to make one thing perfectly clear. This resolution does not call for a moratorium on testing, just the high-stakes uses. Parents and teachers would still be able to look at student test results as one piece of evidence of their learning. Districts would still be able to look at test results to see how schools and districts are doing. For example, they could examine test results to see if race and poverty-based gaps are closing or widening or remaining stagnant. Brookline would be joining 12 other communities that feel the focus on testing has simply gone too far and is actually harming the quality of teaching and learning in our classrooms. Recent events have created a kind of perfect storm of conditions that make this the right time to hit the pause button. First, some districts in the state, although not Brookline, tried out a new test called Park last spring. Then, anticipating a Board of Education vote on whether to stick with the current MCAS tests or move to Park, State Secretary of Education Jim Pizer commissioned a study to compare the old and new tests in terms of measuring college readiness. The studies show that neither MCAS nor Park assesses college readiness well, probably because the tests measure only a narrow slice of the knowledge and skills that are required to be successful in college. The study actually showed the tests don't predict more than 5% to 18% of the variation in college grades in math and English. So, let me ask you this. If a doctor offered you two drugs that have a 5% to 18% chance of making you feel better, would you be interested in taking either one? The State Board of Education voted yesterday morning to accept Commissioner Mitchell Chester's recommendation that we move to a yet-to-be-developed test, an MCAS 2.0, that would be an MCAS-Park hybrid of some sort. Yet another element in this perfect storm came from none other than the President of the United States. Last month, President Obama released a statement acknowledging that there is too much testing going on in our schools, and he also acknowledged that his own high-stakes policies have contributed to the problem. Now, opponents to this initiative say that a moratorium doesn't matter so much here in Brookline, where students often pass without too much trouble, but they're concerned about other places like Boston. But at the Brookline School Committee public hearing, a group of 15 teachers, parents, and a student spoke eloquently and with great specificity about the damaging consequences of high-stakes testing right here in Brookline, and I hope that you'll hear from some of them tonight. They said high-stakes testing is narrowing our curriculum, pushing out other important learning, ratcheting up anxiety, and segregating special education students of color in order to prep them more directly to pass the MCAS. On the other hand, parents, teachers, and political leaders in Boston beg to differ with the argument that this kind of testing is an avenue toward greater equity in educational opportunity. Boston City Councilor Tito Jackson, a graduate of Brookline High School, introduced a similar resolution to the Boston City Council and it was unanimously adopted. Are we about to send a message that Brookline is a better judge of what's good for Boston than Boston itself? We're entering a period of uncertainty about testing, but we know that testing has not been the silver bullet here in Brookline or in places like Boston. We need to think about better ways to prepare our students for successful lives after high school, in college and career, and as citizens in our democracy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sandman. And Mr. Blood, would you come forward, please?
Good evening. Mike Sandman for the advisory committee. The advisory committee voted... Sorry, I have a... queued up. There we go. The advisory committee voted 9 to 10 to 2 against Article 16 and therefore recommends no action. Article 16 expresses support for House Bill 340, which imposes a three-year moratorium on the use of standardized tests for high-stakes purposes, as a gate to graduation, for judging individual teachers, and for judging school districts. At the end of the moratorium, a panel would make recommendations back to the legislature on the future of future use of high-stakes testing. House 340, as Ms. Geisbahn said, would not end the use of standardized tests, thus the test anxiety that parents in particular and students feel will presumably remain during the moratorium, as would the tendency of schools to teach the test. The consensus on the advisory committee is that the moratorium would not adversely affect Brookline schools. We did not view this as a Brookline question, but rather as a statewide question. And the issue was, how do we want to position ourselves? Do we want to primarily focus on a Brookline view or take a broader view? The following table summarizes the discussion at the advisory committee that led that slim majority to recommend no action. Next slide, please. Testing, the pros. Testing spotlight of high-stakes testing. Testing spotlights the failings of urban schools in particular. Do we know better than Boston about Boston? Well, the legislature thought it did, and the data that you have received, I think, this evening shows that there has been an improvement in Boston and in urban schools generally. MCAS created pressure to improve, and as a result, graduation rates in Boston and elsewhere have steadily increased. The additional funding that's gone to urban schools perhaps wouldn't have been there without that spotlight from MCAS results. And the position, therefore, is dropping high-stakes use of the tests will undermine this progress. this progress. On the other side of the same argument, testing creates a teach-to-the-test environment to the detriment of students and teachers alike. Teachers are diverted from the curriculum for weeks, and the curriculum is distorted to focus on the subjects that MCAS covers. That reduces the amount of time spent on other subjects, and therefore it adversely affects education in Brookline schools, and perhaps elsewhere, which, and of course, Brookline schools should be our main concern. Comments that we heard: Advisory Committee members who have children in the schools and who are teachers, or who are teachers had anecdotes supporting the teaching-to-the-test complaint. Advisory Committee members generally did not think a moratorium would adversely affect Brookline schools, but many were concerned about the potentially adverse impact on students in Boston and elsewhere if that spotlight on school district performance goes away. A pro: Testing is an appropriate way of determining whether students should be awarded a diploma. A con: Linking graduation to MCAS scores is unfair to students who did not test well, and it damages their prospects for getting a good job and are getting into college. It's worth pointing out that no Brookline student has ever been denied a diploma solely because they failed to pass MCAS, not one in nineteen years. Next slide, please. The use of data from individual classrooms provides valuable guidance for building professional improvement plans for each teacher, and that's actually the basis of a state law that allows school districts to use MCAS data for that purpose. On the other side, the use of MCAS scores to judge teacher performance is unfair and may lead to inappropriate decisions by administrators that adversely and inappropriately affect a teacher's career. Brookline uses MCAS classroom scores to help develop individualized professional development plans for teachers, not for decisions on retention or promotion. Other districts may differ based on their collective bargaining agreements. Pro: Dropout rates have declined in Boston as a whole, across the state as a whole, and for African-Americans, Hispanics, and English-language learner students. Parental involvement has increased, at least anecdotally, the data is certainly there for the dropout, the contention about dropout rates. And therefore, the pro position is, the most disadvantaged students in schools benefit the most from the use of standardized tests. The con is, the misplaced emphasis on standardized tests hurts those same disadvantaged students the most because they end up with stunted educations, limited curricula, focused on taking the test, and so forth. The data submitted by opponents were persuasive to a slim majority of Advisory Committee members that the adverse impact of a moratorium on other urban school districts offsets the adverse effect of teaching to the test. And since testing would continue, teaching to the test might not change. The crux of the matter was, are we Brookline-centric or citizens of Massachusetts? The argument that a moratorium would lead to backsliding elsewhere was persuasive to a majority, a slim majority. I was on the fence about this myself until I saw the data you now have, and before I listened to a school committee member who came to our hearing and explained why she was opposed to the article. And then, and then when the school committee voted, she switched. And she voted for favorable action, and the school committee voted five to four for favorable action. Why? Because this article sits on the edge for many of us. Teaching to the test is a genuine problem, as is the idea that a teacher might be evaluated based on the MCAS scores of his or her students. As the school committee's statement published on the listserv today says, "Testing only identifies problems; it doesn't solve them." The question is, does high-stakes testing identify problems because it is used to judge school districts in a way that is, on balance, beneficial? The data on higher graduation rates was persuasive to me; it may not be to you. The spotlight and the pressure on school districts has helped extract more funding for underperforming schools. MCAS or something like it will continue whether House 340 passes or not. Please consider the closely balanced arguments on both sides of the question: What's good for Brookline? What's good for Massachusetts? Your driver's license has your Brookline address, but it's issued by the Commonwealth. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heller. I've given a little extra time to each of the principal speakers, and I'm going to enforce the five-minute time limit henceforth, except for Mr. Banka.
Nancy Heller, speaking for a majority of the Board of Selectmen. You've heard many reasons to place a moratorium on the high-stakes aspect of testing in our public schools, that allow for the development of assessment systems to help teachers teach and students learn. You've also had reasons to support the current system. The Board of Selectmen is particularly concerned about the stress that these high-stakes tests create for students and the negative effects on those students. We recognize that testing can be an integral part of student assessment, and of educational systems assessment as well, but it should only be one factor in deciding whether a student graduates from high school or does not graduate. In fact, grades are usually the best predictor of whether a student will succeed, and is one reason that the SAT, for instance, is falling in popularity in college admissions. Many colleges are now not requiring that applicants take the SAT, whereas only one or two decades ago, that test was a major determinant of college admission. Certainly, there are more communities in Commonwealth where schools need improvement, and testing can be used as an assessment and evaluation tool in order to design and implement such improvements. But we shouldn't punish kids by making such tests a prerequisite for their graduation. Failure on a test should not prevent graduation if other indices, like grades, are high enough. I want to share with you some personal experience, and now I'm speaking for myself, which has convinced me that testing should not be high stakes. Many of you knew my late husband, and some of you are his pediatric patients or parents of his patients. And for his patients who struggled in school as a result of learning difficulties, he may have shared his story with you. Will probably not be a surprise to those of you who knew him that he likely suffered from ADHD, and his family lore is replete with stories of his struggles in school. In his last year of middle school, his teachers and guidance counselors suggested that he repeat a grade before progressing to the high school. His parents, his mother was a reading specialist, by the way, who recognized his quickness of mind and wit, did not agree, and he was allowed to move up. With the help of a reading specialist, his mother, he was able to figure out how to study effectively enough so that his grades, while not stellar, were adequate. He was never able to master the art of test-taking, and throughout his life, standardized tests were a significant source of stress. He always felt badly about his lack of ability, and his self-image suffered as a result. His grit and determination to succeed were instrumental in getting him through college, medical school, and residency, but in no way, shape, or fashion did he breeze through. Test-taking was a particular hindrance, standardized tests especially, but his grades indicated that he would prevail. What would have happened had he been required to take a standardized test as a prerequisite to graduation? We don't know. Perhaps he would have squeaked through, perhaps not. In either event, he would have suffered a huge amount of stress and humiliation, and would have felt badly about his abilities and himself.
You have one minute.
He has been described to me as a brilliant pediatrician who related well to children and parents, someone who brought joy to many with his zany sense of humor and quick wit, someone whose common sense and diagnostic skills were hallmarks of his practice. But what if he had not graduated from high school? A tragedy for him, without question, but wouldn't it have been a tragedy for those of us whose lives he touched, for those who could not have enjoyed the benefits of his care? How many students like Dan Heller are we failing by subjecting them to the stress and humiliation of high-stakes tests? Please join me and a majority of the Board of Selectmen in voting favorable action on this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blood. And Ms. Kaplan, would you please come forward?
I'm Roger Blood, a town meeting member from Precinct thirteen. Warren Article sixteen is part of an organized campaign, a statewide campaign, to convince our legislature that high-stakes testing is a bad idea. High-stakes testing, as I think you understand or have heard, is essentially testing to determine whether a student has achieved and learned enough either to be promoted or to graduate. I'd just like to share with you five thoughts as to why this is really not a good idea. First of all, Bill Clinton, speaking years ago about affirmative action, probably said it best when he said, "Mend it; don't end it." In fact, there is a growing consensus, consistent with the argument made by proponents tonight, and others ranging from the Obama administration to the Pioneer Institute, that standardized testing has become too frequent, too intrusive, and needs to be refined and dialed back some. Knowing that, why end it when it's being mended? Second, Mass. ed reform over twenty years ago was a grand bargain among key education stakeholders. It's been a great bipartisan success story here in Massachusetts, a grand bargain involving an enormous financial investment, strongly supported by teachers and other stakeholders, but also a bargain involving a means of measuring and managing progress, so-called high-stakes testing. A key feature that the union did not, was not thrilled about at the time, but certainly signed on to as part of a larger goal. Third, in the two decades following the mid-nineties ed reform, Massachusetts rose in its ranking, its performance, among the fifty states, from around number ten to number one, where it has remained and sustained itself, a clear leader in this country. And what's more, if Massachusetts were a country, we'd be the only one of our fifty states to be ranked among the very top tier of countries globally in education, in education student performance, both in Europe and in Asia. Fourth, please remember that this isn't just about Brookline or other highly-rated school systems. It's an effort, this is an effort to stop testing with consequences and measuring pupil performance in the state's most challenged school systems, the large urban systems, those with much larger number of kids, with fewer advantages, and often less supportive home environments. Arguably, that's where testing to assure the achievement of minimum learning thresholds is most needed, and where, absent the high-stakes aspect of testing to measure learning and achievement, the alternative that we have seen is social promotion in grade, among grades, and tragically unprepared urban high-school graduates. And finally, fifth, think back just a moment when you, and I think back when I, was a young student, and how, at that age, you would most likely have approached taking a test. How seriously would you, or most of us, have prepared and exerted yourself if you were told the test you're about to take is just for diagnostics? Versus, if you were told that the test was to determine the result of, to determine your achievement and whether you were going to be promoted-
One minute.
...or to graduate based upon some minimum standard of learning and achievement. Please consider these five reasons, and I would urge you to vote no on this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kaplan.
Good evening. I'm Ruth Kaplan, town meeting member from Precinct thirteen. Before I begin my formal remarks, I just want to make a couple of points. I saw one argument that the Advisory Committee mentioned about no student in Brookline ever having been denied a diploma for failure to pass the MCAS, and I really beg to differ with that statement. When I was on the school committee, we came up with a system of awarding two different kinds of certificates to students, some of whom did not pass the MCAS, so they would not be, they would have the dignity of having something when they graduated, so I really take issue with that particular piece of information. I also just want to say that there are many other speakers who are going to be speaking tonight, hopefully, in favor of this resolution, including the director of the, the chairman of the English Department of Brookline High School, Mary Birch and all, so I hope that you won't call the question too early to hear from some of these amazing educators who represent our district and other districts. So getting to my remarks, I'm a proud graduate of this high school and of the Devotion School. My two children, my, our, I should say, I am married, our girls were also graduates of this high school and of the Heath School. I served on the Brookline School Committee for four years, very honored to have done that, and I most recently have served on the State Board of Education for the past seven years. My term ended a little over a year ago. I just want to tell you a story also, and I really appreciate Nancy Heller's very moving story. When I was a third grader at the Devotion School, one of my classmates started whistling the theme song to The Lone Ranger at the end of class. Some of you, I'm probably dating you, might remember how that goes. My husband said not to do that, but there you go. In any event, instead of-
You're hired for the Star Spangled Banner.
I thought that might wake people up. In any event, instead of shutting that mischievous student down, my teacher, Ms. Castle, proceeded to tell us that indeed that tune was the William Tell Overture, and gave us a homework assignment based on this, asking us to come to class the next day with a report on William Tell and to draw a picture of the story of William Tell. To this day, it's the one lesson I remember from my third-grade class, or maybe my entire schooling at the Devotion School. It's what you call a teachable moment, and unfortunately, these are few and far between today, due to the laser focus on testing and test prep in all of our schools, including in the schools in this town, and that is tragic. I cannot even imagine a more opportune time to support Article sixteen in light of yesterday's ill-advised decision by the current Board of Elementary and Secondary Education to approve the Commissioner's recommendation for yet another high-stakes assessment, now called MCAS 2.0. This vote was, by the way, not unanimous. The three opposing votes on the board were the student representative, the parent representative, and the teacher representative, the very constituencies most directly impacted by this decision. The proposed resolution, this, Brookline's proposed resolution, calls for a moratorium in high-stakes testing in order to allow adequate time to step back and study the effectiveness of our current system. This has now actually become urgent. Believe it or not, no one really knows what MCAS 2.0 even means. For the past two years, and for most of my time on the board, we were told that MCAS needed to be replaced by the new PARC assessment, a completely online test that supposedly measured critical thinking and problem-solving skills. Get that: A standardized test measuring critical thinking and problem-solving skills. Does that even make sense?
You have one minute.
That a single, one-shot test, thank you, is a good way to assess critical thinking? To me, it sounds like a contradiction in terms. For the past two years, the adoption of the PARC test was treated like a fait accompli. However, with the election of a new governor and a new board chair, the politics of ed reform have changed dramatically. Suddenly, the PARC test was no longer a done deal, we're left with an assessment of some sort of hybrid that no one understands, not even the board who voted on it. I ask you, is this political approach to test development in the best interests of children? The answer is a resounding no. The Mass Association of School Committees just voted overwhelmingly to support the legislation on this moratorium. After twenty years of MCAS test prep driving curriculum, causing arts to be cut in Boston and places like that, resulting in less or no recess, no phys ed, more stress, and a very demoralized teaching population, isn't it time to assess the assessments and examine whether or not the massive amounts of taxpayer money, and I do mean millions of dollars- whether or not the massive amounts of taxpayer money, and I do mean millions of dollars, are really worth, are worth it on test development? Could not these limited resources be better spent on teaching and learning?
Please conclude.
Friends, we have lost our way, even with the best of intentions, the achievement gaps in Massachusetts have not been narrowed by the testing. Our children deserve nothing less than this reexamination, and in Brookline as well. One more sentence? No child, no teacher, no school, and no district should be narrowly measured by high-stakes tests alone, it's not fair, and it flies in the face of common sense. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Sandman, I take it you, do you agree with Ms. Kaplan's qualification to your statement about-
No, sir, I don't.
Well, go ahead and disagree.
Ms. Kaplan said, said that she, that students had been denied, students who failed MCAS had been denied diplomas, that is correct, but my statement was, no student who had failed MCAS had been denied a diploma solely for that reason, solely for that reason.
Okay, let's leave it at that. Mr. Benko. And Ms. Stone, would you come forward, please?
Thank you. Dick Benko, Precinct 13. To be responsible, we have to look beyond Brookline. Article 16's moratorium would apply statewide and would undermine success in urban school districts that serve minority and low-income students. For four years before I retired as a practicing attorney, I volunteered in the Boston public schools, including two of the most challenged middle schools, the Timelte and the Dearborn. I saw kids in the eighth grade adding on their fingers, passing around photos and chatting in class without any intervention from the teacher, being sent out for fighting and back into class five minutes later, a complete lack of expectations. When I retired, I passed the state certification exam as a middle school math teacher. For the past 10 years, I've been volunteering at a charter public school in Boston. I taught eighth-grade math, and now I volunteer three to four days a week, working with new teachers and working with kids who are struggling with math. What is happening in the trenches? Students in public schools do take MCAS in the elementary and the middle schools, but even if they haven't learned a thing and failed the test, they can be passed through. Consequently, the elementary and middle schools in the Boston public school system have passed through kids year after year without even minimal grade-level skills. We see this at my charter school, which starts in the sixth grade and takes kids by lottery from the Boston public schools. Two out of five come in with below-grade-level reading skills, two out of three with below-grade-level math skills. In fact, one out of three incoming sixth graders have been passed through to the sixth grade by the Boston public schools with second and third-grade math skills. And this is not just anecdotal. Look at the numbers. Next slide. More than one in five Boston public school fifth graders are in the lowest warning or failing category in English language arts. Almost one in three are in the lowest category in math. That means they can't do even simple grade-level problems. Yet 99% of them are pushed through to the sixth grade, and similar data holds for eighth graders. But when students get to the 10th-grade MCAS, which is tied to high school graduation, the expectations and incentives have to change. Kids can no longer just be pushed through high school. You may have seen the recent articles about Boston English. It shows what can be done. A new principle, teachers spending extra time tutoring. In just three years, the percentage of students in the top two categories, rising from 36% to 65% in math, and from 39% to 84% in English. It's asserted that high-stakes testing has negative impacts on English language learners and on special-needs, minority, and low-income students. The data shows that is not the case. Many of you have a handout with some detailed information. Achievement gaps have been put in the spotlight. Next slide. Next slide. Thank you. Dropout rates are dramatically declining across all subgroups. Next slide. High school graduation rates are increasing. Next slide. College enrollment rates are increasing, both statewide- next slide. -and in Boston, particularly for special-need students. It's also asserted that high-stakes testing forces, quote, "teaching to the test." The MCAS math exam has proven to be the most challenging for students, so let's focus on that. Passing the 10th-grade MCAS math exam is equivalent to a good eighth-grade math course. I first heard that from the head of middle school math for the Boston public schools. It was recently confirmed by a member of our school committee, and I reviewed the 2014 10th-grade MCAS math exam. The students in my school have seen everything on that test by the eighth grade, and I suspect the same is true for Brookline students. Students won't get everything right, but you can meet the MCAS high school graduation requirement with an educational proficiency plan and just 17 out of 60 points on that math exam, and you have at least five chances to pass it before 12th grade. If MCAS were a true college entrance exam, it would no doubt be more rigorous, but how can it be wrong to, quote, "teach to the test" when you're talking about eighth-grade math by the time kids finish high school, and ensuring that high school graduates can read and communicate basic ideas in writing? Finally, House Bill 340, endorsed by Article 16, would prevent the Department of Education from using standardized tests, and I quote, "for the purpose of assessing the performance of any public school or school district," unquote. That would eliminate a valuable source of information for parents, it would undermine programs explicitly targeted to underperforming schools and districts, it would extinguish an important spotlight on school performance and the achievement gap, no matter how badly a district was failing its students. A quality public education is the only real chance that many low-income and minority kids have if they're not lucky enough to be in the Brookline school system. With the moratorium, students in Boston, Lynn, Holyoke, and other urban districts could be sent into an increasingly knowledge-based world, lacking even minimal math and literacy skills. That would be real stress. The moratorium would affect 12,000 students in Boston alone over a three-year period, and that is just plain wrong. Thank you.
Now, Mr. Davis, do you have a question as opposed to a speech?
Yes.
Okay, ask your question.
First, my name is Jonathan Davis, I'm a town meeting member from Precinct 10. On page 16,4 of the combined reports, at the very bottom of that page, there's a statement, "High-stakes testing is defined as testing that is, one, used to determine whether a student may graduate from high school, two, used in an educator's evaluation, three, used in the assessment of a public school or school district." My question, Mr. Moderator, is that in each situation where the term "used to" is used, whether there is any situ, any case that is known of in Massachusetts where the high sta, the test is exclusively used to determine whether a student may graduate from high school, whether in Massachusetts it is known that the test is, for example, the MCAS is used exclusively in an educator's evaluation, and similarly, whether the MCAS is used exclusively in the assessment of a public school or school district?
Does anyone have an answer?
Those are three questions, Mr. Moderator, I'm sorry.
It's a long question. Does anyone have an answer to Mr. Davis's question? Ms. Stone, you're on next, anyway.
Thank you, Rebecca Stone, town meeting member from Precinct 3 and member of the school committee. I am happy to have someone correct me on this, but I believe that the exclusive use pertains to the 10th-grade MCAS, which does not deprive us of the opportunity to give a diploma, which we do in Brookline, that is a certificate of completion of Brookline standards, but it does deny that student, failure to pass the MCAS by the end of 12th grade, does deny that student the ability to get a Massachusetts diploma, which would mean they're not eligible for certain scholarships and they're not eligible for Massachusetts state colleges.
Mr. Moderator, is there any answer to my other two questions?
Whether it's used exclusively for item two or item three?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
Scott Nann, Precinct 10. If you look at the plain text of the Massachusetts bill, which is at issue here, it is an or, it is prevented, prohibited for use for any of those three cases, so I think the answer to your first question is an or. I don't remember what your second-
But not any one exclusively?
It is, it is prohib, I can read you the, for example, it says, notwithstanding blah blah blah, the department shall not, sorry, shall not use student achievement measures on the MCAS assessment or use student growth measures for the purpose of assessing the performance of any public school or school district, and it goes on like that for each of those three. So, each of those three cases is banned by the, by the House bill.
So, Mr. Moderator, what, what that means, because I must direct my question to you, is that it cannot be used at all according to the, the bill, is that correct? Am I re, am I hearing that correctly, Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Stone?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I am still Rebecca Stone, town meeting member from Precinct 3 and member of the school committee, speaking for a divided school committee on Article 16. There are several issues that have been conflated in this debate, I suspect they will continue to be conflated over the high-stakes use of standardized tests. Three of them, interesting as they are, as issues, are not addressed by this article or by the legislation that it supports. Those issues are, first, whether standardized tests are good or bad, useful or not, for student learning; second, whether we give too many of them to our students; and, third, what test is Massachusetts going to use and why? This article does not establish the sense of town meeting regarding any of those issues. What it does is ask us to approve, for three years, a break from using the results of these tests in ways that are considered high stakes, and those have been reviewed for you very recently. The school committee was almost evenly split on whether these high-stakes uses of standardized tests benefited student learning. In particular, we disagreed on whether high-stakes use provides the guarantee that the data provided by the tests will be used in ways that address inequities in student achievement. Five school committee members concluded that high-stakes use of standardized tests was not ultimately what provided that push to take the data seriously and actually address inequities, and that a moratorium could be useful in helping to resolve some of these other questions that we've been talking about. The other four disagreed, believing that without those consequences, school districts would not have sufficient reason to take action or to spend the money to address achievement gaps that were revealed by the testing. Where the school committee all agreed, however, was on the purpose of assessment in general, including standardized testing, and I shared that statement that was referred to earlier that we voted unanimously, I shared it on the TMMA list today, and I hope you'll all have a chance to see it. I'd like to repeat just some of that today to clarify the school committee's split position on this article. This Brookline School Committee seeks through its actions to support the core values of our district: high achievement for all, excellence in teaching, collaboration, respect for human differences, and educational equity. In addition, we strive to keep the district moving towards its 10-year vision for teaching and learning, one that is explicitly focused, excuse me, on the intersection of quality teaching and the use of a variety of assessments to understand student learning and performance. We believe educators' efforts should focus on the broad range of learning experiences that promote innovation, creativity, problem-solving, collaboration, communication, critical thinking, and deep subject matter knowledge in our students. We believe excessive time should not be used for any form of assessment, including standardized testing. We believe test teachers should not experience pressure to teach to the test, but should be motivated to support high achievement for all. We believe locally-developed assessments are critically important for understanding student learning. And finally, we believe there should be sustained attention by educator districts and state leaders to review and modify our approaches to assessment, including the use of standardized testing, which tests to use, how frequently they are implemented, and the usefulness of the data. At the core of high achievement for all and our commitment to true educational equity is a commitment not just to shine a light on our educational practices and resulting differences in student achievement, but to take action that addresses systemic inequities or structural barriers to the achievement of certain groups of students within our school district. Standardized testing can play a role in helping to pursue those goals. With that as preamble, I still side-
I hope it's not just a preamble, because you only have one minute left.
And I will only take one minute, Mr. Moderator. With that as preamble, I still side with my four other colleagues in believing that a moratorium on high-stakes use could create some room for deliberation of all of these issues, including and especially how we will make the transition to, with equity, to the newly-named MCAS 2.0, and I join them in urging favorable action on Article 16.
Thank you. Now, we're going to hear from one teacher at the high school, Ms. Birchinal. Then I'll entertain that motion.
Good evening, town meeting. My name is Mary Birchinal, I live in Jamaica Plain, and I am Chair of the English Department here at Brookline High School. I have taught at Brookline High for 25 years. I have been Chair of the English Department for 12. The first thing I want you to know is that I am not anti-test. I love a good test and have created and corrected hundreds and hundreds of stacks of them. I am not anti-standardized test. Comparing results across classrooms and schools and districts is useful and prevents us from operating in a vacuum. I am not anti-MCAS. I think MCAS in English language arts has given schools in Massachusetts, including Brookline, some useful, basic information. In its first years, it brought attention to educational equity by shining a light on schools and groups that had been underperforming or underserved. But I am passionately against any further escalation of high-stakes testing until we have more evidence that it improves learning for students. In 1975, a social psychologist by the name of Donald Campbell formulated what is now known as Campbell's Law, which runs as follows. Follow me on this. The more any quantitative social indicator is used for social decision-making, the more subject it will be to corruption pressures, and the more apt it will be to distort and corrupt the social processes it is intended to monitor. In other words, according to this law, the higher the stakes, the less valid the measure becomes. In my mind, this so clearly applies to the unintended consequences of high-stakes testing. Even though I am not anti-MCAS, I am here to speak against its damaging high-stakes uses. Using test scores to evaluate teachers may be the most disturbing escalation of this reform package, and it's coming down the pike for Brookline now. That is the main reason I am here today. I evaluate over 25 teachers a year. I know it is a hugely seductive idea from the management angle to think we can figure out which teachers are better than others by using test scores, even if partially. However, it is not so. As everyone knows, the factors that go into a good teacher are infinitely complicated. If there comes a time when I am required to evaluate- If there comes a time when I am required to evaluate Brookline English teachers using student assessment scores, even if these assessments are created in-house, that is the year I will leave my job. I can't emphasize enough what folly this sort of teacher evaluation will be, how incredibly time-consuming, how absurd, how demoralizing. I can't emphasize enough what damage it will do to teacher morale, or how much it will distort what happens in classrooms. Campbell's Law will unfortunately apply. In those early years of MCAS, I bought the dream. I tried hard to believe that continued standardized testing could help underserved schools and underserved students. I told myself that even if high-stakes testing was not serving Brookline, it might be serving less privileged districts. But each year, I see not only diminishing returns, but escalating problems. I have been following this ed reform closely in the state and around the country. I spend hours reading the research and the articles, trying to figure out what's happening. I am convinced that it is not closing achievement gaps. It is not improving schools here or anywhere. All it seems to be doing is driving good teachers into other fields, and I am seeing that in frightening numbers. I don't pretend improving schools is easy, but we need to press pause and find a more effective way to do it. Please support the moratorium on the high-stakes use of testing.
Now, Mr. Selwyn, I made a mistake and should have called on you before, Ms. Burchinal. You have three minutes left, Mr. Banka's time. If you can make it two, we'd all appreciate it.
Lee Selwyn, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 13. You know, when high-stakes testing, when MCAS came into existence some 20 years or so ago, I remember my wife and I kind of looked at each other and said, "What's the big deal?" We grew up in New York. We took standardized tests in high school after every course, either every semester or every year. And you know what? They still do that. The New York region system was actually adopted by an act of the New York Legislature in 1866, and it's still going on, 150 years. It has never, at least when I lived in New York, was certainly not politicized. It was, the teachers did teach to the test, because the test was the culmination of the curriculum in each course. The tests were created by committees of teachers who were themselves teaching those classes, chemistry, or English, or geometry, or whatever it happened to be. That process continues to this very day. It's an effective method of both maintaining standards and also providing uniformity and consistency across the state. I think there probably is a big problem with MCAS, and because MCAS seems to be too much focus on a test that's not even being given at the right time, it's not being given at the end of a course, it's being given sometime during the 10th grade. The problem is, let's fix that, but I have not seen any of the proponents of this article actually make a case that a moratorium is required in order to accomplish an improvement. I agree that the so-called MCAS 2.0 is probably just more of the same and is not the right solution. But a moratorium isn't the right solution either. It's elitist. It does not affect very many Brookline kids, but as Dick Banka has pointed out, it has produced good results in Boston, improvements in graduation rates, lower dropout rates, improvements in achievement, and we should not be discounting that fact. So I urge you to vote against this warrant article, so that we send the message to the Legislature that, yes, you can improve the test, you can replace the test, but don't go to a moratorium, because once you go in that direction, it's going to be very hard to climb back up. Thank you.
Okay. I have a motion for the question. I'll allow it. Is there a second? Thank you. I have the following speakers, all of whom would support the moratorium motion. Ms. Flynn and Ms. Mahoney from Brookline High School, Ms. Chin, Mr. White, Ms. Humphrey, Mr. Miller, Town Meeting Members, Ms. Felderspiel, Ms. Wenderschubow of the Brookline Educators Union, Ms. Solomon, Ms. Thall, Mr. Richmond, and Ms. Rosewood. On the motion for the question to terminate debate, those takes a two-thirds vote, those in favor, please raise your hands. Those opposed, motion carries by a two-thirds vote. On the motion on page 16-3, we'll have an electronic vote. This is main, Article 16, main motion. I give up, Mr. Carroll. I give up too easily, anyway. Okay, the voting period has commenced. Those of you who are in favor of the motion on page 16-3, raise your hands and press 1. Those of you opposed, raise your hands and press 2. 3 is an abstention. Once again, the top row of numbered buttons are the ones you push, 1, 2, 3, not the very Motion carries by a vote of 120 to 70 with one abstention. Seven abstentions, excuse me. We move now to the last article, Article 18. Don't forget to turn in your handheld devices, and can we have quiet in the rear of the auditorium? The, please confine your conversations to the lobby. Thank you. The main motion under Article 18 is on page 18-2. Over to page 18-3. Moved by Merrilee, seconded by Ms. Snyder. The Advisory Committee offers an amendment consisting of the change in the wording of the first resolved clause. You'll see that wording at the bottom of page 18-6. That would substitute for the first resolved clause on the top of page 18-3. That is moved by Mr. Lynn Jones, seconded by Ms. Banka.
Good evening. I'm Merrilee, representing Precinct Six, and I'm a co-petitioner with Ruth Ann Snyder of Article 18. Actually, before speaking about the resolution, I'm going to speak briefly about the process. This resolution has been through seven iterations, the result of the copious meetings with the various committees and commissions that precede town meeting. While I wouldn't exactly call it fun, I sincerely believe it's an example of how government should function, especially in this era of governmental stalemate. Some longtime Town Meeting Members tell me that 20 years ago, this wouldn't have happened, that the process then was more hit or miss. But the resolution that Ruth Ann and I are now presenting, and was approved unanimously by the Select Board, is the result of much vetting, much adjusting, much effort to reach a version that people could largely agree with, and I thank everyone for their conscientious
Good evening. I'm Ruth Ann Snyder, Town Meeting Member in Precinct Six. Last winter, troubled by the racial disturbances in the town and my growing awareness of the racial injustices in the nation, among them, the school-to-prison pipeline, I read all 78 pages of the Selectmen's 2012 Diversity and Inclusion Report, which also includes the town's annual Equal Employment Opportunity Report to the EOC Commission. My big takeaway was learning that in 2010, a unanimous Board of Selectmen voted to have the town join the Commonwealth Compact. The Compact is a consortium of small and large, public and private, for-profit and not-for-profit businesses, academic institutions, and government agencies, collected together under the umbrella of the Edward McCormick Graduate School of Public Policy. Their common purpose is to implement best-practice action steps that will lead to increasing and maintaining the presence of women and people of color at every grade level in their organizations, at every grade level in their organizations. Five years later, the town has begun implementing some of these action steps. As we note in the "whereas" clauses of our resolution, but there remains one large elephant in the room that prevents the town from dovetailing with the Compact's aspiration to have the workforce's racial diversity reflect the community's racial diversity. That elephant is the town's historic lack of a black community. Like a black hole in a starry sky, their numbers are too small to reflect their presence. To overcome this historic lack, Article 18 embraces the larger community of metro Boston to create an applicant pool that would reflect racial diversity, a community to whom we are legally bound by water distribution and bike paths and transit systems and air quality requirements and my grandson's soccer league. Though there are benefits of embracing a broader community, the concept of a broader community, it sparked the Advisory Committee's concern that we were setting illegal hiring quotas. This concern did not keep up with the changes in the resolution's language. Any reference to the numbered goal, timeframe, or use of the word "hire" has been removed from the resolved clauses, and it is, it is entirely legal to express the town's values and aspirations to move forwards towards diversity and inclusion. While the Compact singles out women, as well as people of color, and some have asked us about other categories of discrimination, we felt that broadening the scope would dilute the purpose of the resolution, which is to be more inclusive of people of color at all grade levels of employment.
We feel that the resolution is especially timely for several reasons. In addition to reinforcing the town's commitment to the Commonwealth Compact, the resolution's "whereas" clauses acknowledge Brookline's readiness to address its lack of employment diversity, from working to revive the town's diversity and inclusion policy to activating the new Department and Commission on Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations. And we believe that the nation's troubling race relations have made all of us acutely aware of how far American society needs to go to fulfill its value of liberty and justice for all. The town's voters have led the way, bringing diversity to the School Committee and Select Board. The Brookline TAB, in its recent news article, incorrectly reported that the town's employees numbered 371. That appears to be a typo that left out 1,000. Add together the full and part-time town employees, and the total is 1,369. When you then add the School Department, which has an even higher number of part- and full-time employees, the number jumps to 3,728. Let me repeat that total, 3,728. That makes Brookline the largest employer in town. Speaking of the School Department, you're aware that the school district operates under a different jurisdiction from the town, so please understand that we're not overlooking the importance of having a school policy that parallels that of the town, and we will take the steps needed to encourage a formal school policy. Here's some of what we learned along the way. We saw that certain things are assumed, just taken for granted, when speaking about hiring white people. It's assumed they will be hired on the basis of being qualified and that the hiring process will be conducted legally. But talk about hiring people of color, and it appears necessary to reassure ourselves that they will be qualified for the position and no illegal preference will be extended on their behalf. Similarly, say the words affirmative action, and they get applied to people of color dating to the 1960s and 70s, with the conclusion that affirmative action gave people of color an unfair and illegal advantage. We don't really notice that our society has been conditioned since the 1600s by centuries of affirmative action. Starting with white English settlers granted land in Jamestown, through land-grant incentives for white pioneers moving west, and Homestead Acts, and even the GI Bill and easy mortgages for white families in the suburbs, the idea of affirmatively acting on behalf of white settlers and white homebuyers is woven into our history and our psyches. So we don't even notice why we tend to hire on the basis of race when that race is white. It's just normal. But because color gets our attention, we now declare that it is illegal to hire on the basis of race. One of the most discouraging periods of this process was when I pored over legal briefs and cases sent to me by our Town Council Office. Legal precedent is so established that if I, as a white person, sued the town, I would be far more likely to win than if a person of color sued the town. The rule of law is not synonymous with achieving justice. So if this resolution really results in finding ways to level the playing field, Brookline will then get the best-talented people, regardless of race.
You have one more minute, Ms. Snyder.
Okay, I'm good at talking fast. Most of the discussion during the roundup to town meeting focused on the language of the first resolved, but the second resolved is equally maybe even more important, which is to say implementation matters. The whole point of going forward is to be serious about evaluating progress and acting accordingly. We ask that you vote no action on the Advisory Committee's amendment and vote in favor of what would then be the main motion, as written and rewritten and rewritten, by the petitioners and approved by the Select Board, by the Select Board. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Galbart?
See if I get this in the right place. Janet Galbart, at-large member of the Advisory Committee, speaking for the Advisory Committee. As the petitioners have stated, we spent a lot of time at Advisory Committee reviewing the language, as did the Selectmen and Office of Town Council. The Advisory Committee wholeheartedly supports the intent of the petitioners, and the only reason we made a minor amendment is that, as we read the emails that were sent by Town Council, they offered an opinion that the language offered by the petitioners was okay, but that it's subject to interpretation. So we slightly amended the language, so instead of making any reference at all to any group, or any population, or any potential, anyone at any time saying, "You're trying to balance," we changed it to having a goal of increasing diversity across all departments and at all employment levels. We support this, our amendment- Our amendment was passed on a vote of 19 to 0 with one abstention, and we ask that you support the amendment so that there's no question that the town, in its search for additional diversity among its staff, is still in compliance with, unfortunately, what the law requires us to do. Thank you.
And Ms. Stone, if you still wish to be heard, would you come forward, please?
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Bernard Green, speaking for a unanimous Board of Selectmen. First, let me express my appreciation to Merrillise and Ruth Ann Snyder for their willingness to work with the Board, and the Advisory Committee, and others, to address many of our concerns and the concerns of others, and produce a warrant article that we believe will improve the tools used to ensure that our hiring of town employees is open and fair, and will ultimately result in the type of diversity in the town workforce that this town desires. First of all, the original warrant Article 18 was a non-binding resolution submitted by petition that sought to clarify and confirm the town's commitment to improving the racial diversity of Brookline's workforce. That's on page 18-1 to 18-2 in the materials. Specifically, the original warrant article resolved that the town is committed to having its workforce, both town and school, reflect the 23% makeup of Brookline residents who are people of color, as stated by the Brookline Community Foundation, and that the town will improve the detail and accuracy of annual data reports on town employment. So my presentation will highlight some of the changes the petitioners made to that language, and the difference between the Board of Selectmen's language and that of the Advisory Committee. Expanding the diversity of the town's workforces is an important goal of the Board of Selectmen. The Selectmen, however, had some significant concerns, including, one, whether the first resolved clause, as I mentioned, in the original warrant article, which stated a specific numerical percentage goal for minority employment, could be construed as that dreaded quota hiring plan, and therefore potentially subjecting the town to litigation. Two, whether the use of the Brookline Community Foundation minority percentage numbers were relevant or meaningful. And three, whether it was appropriate for town meeting to include the schools in the warrant article. Subsequent to the filing of the original article, the petitioners agreed to modify the language to address all of the Board of Selectmen's concerns, and the Selectmen then voted unanimously on October 27 to recommend the language found at pages 18-4 to 18-5 of your materials. At a subsequent meeting, the Advisory Committee, however, voted to replace the first resolved clause in our language with language found at page 18-6 of the materials. Now, and this is important, I think the most important thing. The difference between the Advisory Committee language and the Board of Selectmen language really hangs on whether the use of the metric "Metro Boston," which is defined to include the surrounding counties of Brookline, or Norfolk County and the other surrounding counties of, what are they, Middlesex and Suffolk, to gauge the success or lack of success in diversifying the town's workforce can be construed as that dreaded hiring quota. The Selectmen viewed the language as, one, stating an aspirational goal, not a hard hiring number. And I think that, you know, just using the dictionary definition of these things makes that clear. And two, speaking to the town's commitment and its goal of having a workforce that reasonably, not exactly, reasonably reflects the available workforce in the approximate area from which town employees are typically drawn, which is Metro Boston. So I mean, the idea there is that we want to make sure that we're hiring a workforce that reflects who's out there and available to be hired. If it's not, right, if it's not that, then the remedy is not that we're going to hire people who otherwise would not be hired, rather, the remedy is that we would reflect on the procedures used to identify, attract, evaluate, and hire applicants for job openings, and making any needed improvements to those procedures so that our hiring practices reflect what the community from which we normally hire looks like.
30 seconds.
Whoa, talk fast. At the Selectmen's meeting on November 3, the Board took up reconsideration of Article 18 in order to evaluate the merits of the Advisory Committee's language that was mentioned earlier, and to consider additional language, assuring any reader that any measures the town took under the warrant article would be in compliance with federal law. Ultimately, the Board decided that the proposed additional language was not necessary or appropriate, and that it would not reconsider Article 18. The Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations Commission also took up Article 18 and voted to recommend the Board of Selectmen's language with one dissenting vote, who was concerned that the use of the terms "black," "Hispanic," "Latino," "Asian-American," "Indian," and "people of color" was a listing that mirrors and reinforces improper racial classifications.
Please conclude, Mr. Green.
I am concluding, Mr. Moderator. For what it's worth, I agree that such racial categories are scientifically indefensible and obscure more than they illuminate, but this issue was not discussed by the Board of Selectmen, as the Commission accepted the Board of Selectmen's language. The original vote of the Board, which unanimously recommended favorable action on the Board of Selectmen's motion, can be found at page 18-4 through 5, and this is the language that the Board of Selectmen recommends to town meeting. Thank you.
Ms. Stone. Capping off our proceedings.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Rebecca Stone, Town Meeting Member of Precinct 3, and speaking just for myself for a change. I am so grateful to the petitioners for removing their initial reference to the schools so that School Committee members in town meeting, like myself, could give full-throated support to this article. As I talked about in considering the moratorium on high-stakes use of standardized testing, if we are serious about addressing persistent inequities that arise from conscious or unconscious actions and attitudes in the workplace, in schools, or in our hiring offices, we have to do two things. First, we have to shine a bright light on the problem. Article 18 promises that we will shine that bright light on our hiring practices and outcomes in the town. Data help us to do that, and the requirement to publicize that data ensures that the bright light of public scrutiny that we need to ensure that real diversity is not just a distant goal, but a realistic and reachable consequence of our decisions and actions will be applied. Second, we have to commit to doing something about what we see when we shine that light. Here again, petitioners have pointed us in the right direction. In the schools, we have been increasingly committed over the past several years to this process of shining a light and then taking action on diversity and equity. Last week, we received our annual report from the Director of Human Resources on Staff Hiring and Diversity, which the moderator will be relieved to hear. I am not going to attempt to recreate for you here. In short, as Merrillise suggested, we have room for improvement in the schools. Our data is not yet as robust as it should be, and so we are identifying areas where we need to improve it. Our hiring practices, in order to attract a more diverse pool, could be strengthened, and this year, we will be using some new approaches in that regard. We also understand, as should town meeting, that hiring is only one piece of the puzzle in supporting diversity. Equally, if not more important, is the development, support, and retention of people of color who work for the town and the schools, as well as ensuring the cultural competence of everyone in the system that is required to best support our students and our staff. We continue to try to improve in those areas as well. In short, we need to train a bright light, make the data public, and commit to a series of steps to improve. That is what Article 18 makes us promise to do as a town, and I urge your enthusiastic vote of favorable action.
We will vote first on the Advisory Committee's amendment.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to speak for, if I'm allowed.
Yes, go ahead. Make it snappy.
I will do my best, and this is why I will read. I appreciate this resolution.
Who are you?
I am Mariela Ames, Precinct 15. I appreciate this resolution and the good intention of the petitioners, and let me point out and remind you that in 2010, really, you unanimously voted to have an annual report on the town's diversity in our workforce. The main purpose is similar to this resolution, and it was to look at our numbers and use them as a benchmark to move forward. After three annual reports filled with promises since 2011, the last two years, Human Resources stopped bothering with the report. Today, we have 93% of town employees who make above 70,000 white folks. In 2011, that number was 95%. Of the 26 department heads, one is a person of color. Paying again for MCAT training for the fire department, this training happened also already in 2011. Resurrecting a diversity and inclusion department does nothing if the decision-makers will not act on it. Approving resolutions, and I appreciate the support of town meeting, but if those responsible for hiring continue to reject qualified candidates of color, and we don't demand accountability of action from the Selectmen, we will continue this poetry of resolutions with no changes. To say that race is not a factor when hiring happens, and we have 93% white at this stage and age, is, I want to say, willful blindness. We do need action, and we do need to demand that action from our top decision-makers. Thank you.
Thank you. On the Advisory Committee's motion to substitute for the first resolved clause, the language at the bottom of page 18-6, those in favor, please raise your hands. Those opposed, motion fails. On the main motion, unamended.
Mr. Moderator.
Request for recorded vote, please.
Well, okay. If there are 35 town meeting members that would like a recorded vote, we'll have one. Keep your hands up, please. Okay, I give up. We'll have a recorded vote. This is main motion, Article 18. Anytime. This is the main motion on page 18-2, which is identical to the motion of the Board of Okay, the voting period has commenced. Those of you who are voting in favor of this motion, please raise your hands and press 1. Those of you voting against, please raise your hands and press 2. And press 3 if you're abstaining. Motion carries by a vote of 155 in favor, 3 against, and 6 abstentions. Correction on the vote under Article 15. It was 139 in favor, 42 opposed, and 11 abstentions. Please do not forget to hand in your handheld devices in the rear of the auditorium. I will take a motion to dissolve the fall town meeting. Is there a second? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries, and town meeting is hereby dissolved. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.